To call the meeting to order, welcome to our third public hearing for the state budget. The clerk can call the roll.
Representative Born.
Here. All right, we have fourteen members present, a quorum is present. Just like to remind folks, silence your cell phones, any other noise-making devices you may have with you. Please take your conversations out in the hallway so we're not disruptive to the folks that are trying to address the committee. Silent applause only. Folks have done a pretty good job over the years between jazz hands or just standing to show their support and not disrupt the speaker who is trying to convey their message to the committee. Also, as a rule of the committee, no signs are allowed at the meeting. If you wish to testify, you need to fill out one of these slips out front where you came in. So please do so if you wish to testify and have not done so. There are two microphones set up. In a little while here, the clerk will call the first list of speakers and you can line up at either microphone and we will alternate between the microphones back and forth. To ensure everyone can be heard, the speakers will be given two minutes to speak and groups of three or more will be given five minutes. The clerk has a sign, thirty-second warning and a "Time's Up" sign. With that, we'll proceed to the committee members' introductions. I am State Representative Mark Born, the Assembly Co-Chair of the Joint Finance Committee from Beaverdam.
State Representative Shannon Zimmerman, I represent the 30th Assembly District and that includes the cities of Hudson and River Falls.
I am Representative Jesse Rodriguez, I represent the 21st Assembly District which include the cities of Oak Creek, parts of the city of Milwaukee and Greenfield.
Hello, State Representative Alex Dollman, 39th Assembly District, hail from Marcusan, Wisconsin. Our district includes Ripon, close to Fond du Lac.
I'm Representative Karen Hurd and I represent the 69th District Assembly, which are the entire county of Clark and then also the counties of Chippewa, parts of the counties of Chippewa, Taylor and Marathon.
I'm State Representative Tip McGuire, I represent the 64th Assembly District, which is northeastern Kenosha County from I-94 to the shore.
Good morning, I'm State Representative Deb Andraka, I represent the northern Milwaukee suburbs, southern Ozaki County suburbs. Great to be here.
Good morning, I'm Senator Howard Markline, Senate Co-Chair of the Joint Finance Committee. I represent the 17th Senate District, which is in southwest Wisconsin. My district borders Iowa and Illinois. Great to be here.
Good morning, Patrick Testin represents the 24th Senate District, which Stevens Point, Wisconsin, Rapids, Black River Falls, so a good portion of central and western Wisconsin. So thanks for hosting us.
State Senator Eric Wimberger, 2nd Senate District, in and around Green Bay, northeast Wisconsin.
State Senator Rob Staffshult, 10th Senate District, which is St. Croix, Pierce, Pepin, Buffalo and Tremblow County.
Julian Bradley, State Senator, 28th Senate District, which is southeastern Wisconsin, Waukesha County area.
State Senator Romaine Quinn from the beautiful 25th Senate District that you are all sitting in today.
Senator Latania Johnson, I represent the 6th Senate District, which is Milwaukee's north and west sides and parts of Wauwatosa.
State Senator Kel De Royes from Madison and Dane County, I represent our beautiful state capital and the University of Wisconsin-Madison.
Also joining the committee today are some legislators from the region and other parts of the state. We have Representatives Green, Tucker, Swearengen, Summerfield, Stroud and Johnson. With that, I would like to invite Hayward School Superintendent Craig Olson to come forward and offer some opening remarks. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much for everyone coming today up to the great Northwoods, appreciate it very much. For those people that were here at 5:30 this morning, we've already spent a lot of time together, so enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you very much for being up here, appreciate it very much. And I'd like to introduce our school board president Derek Hand right now, as you're all sitting in the facility, that he definitely led us getting done. So, Mr. Derek Hand.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Joint Committee for being here tonight. I want to welcome everybody. I know there's a lot of people here, so I'm not going to take a lot of time. I would just ask that everybody please respect the facilities, respect each other and let's make this a very productive day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for hosting us. With that, the clerk will call the first round of names.
John Humphries. Samantha Lottz. Sid Adel, D-I-E-H-L. We have, looks like a group with Learn in My Shoes with Tiffany Schano, I think it's S-C-H-A-N-N-O. Melissa Custer, Teri Knoll. Kimberly Vlik, I think it's V-L-C-E-K with Jonah. Amanda Bab. Eau Claire Tenant Landlord Resource Center. Jeremy Greggett, Citizen Action of Wisconsin. Kalen Kambers. Chris Hamburg Boyle. Tammy Simmons, S-I-M-O-H, Menominee Area Chamber Visitor Center. Kathleen Eckert, E-L-C-H-E-R-T, Wisconsin Library Association, that looks like a group. And Christine DePree.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to testify. John Humphries, AEF, seventy-two school districts educating eighty-three thousand students across the state. We're mostly small rural school districts. In fact, we now educate more kids than the Milwaukee Public Schools. Our magic number is twelve thousand six hundred fifty dollars per student. How did we get there? Well, we followed your lead. It's exactly what you did and would hopefully do in the next budget. It's what you did in the last budget. It was actually done through, in part, in large part, through an action by Senator Strobel as a separate appropriations measure, which protected it to a certain extent from the line item veto, giving an important opportunity for this budget process. It's also an important milestone. It would create ninety percent of school districts being funded on a per pupil basis within ten percent of each other. It's a problem you didn't create, but it's certainly one that you could solve. Now, here we stand in Hayward, Wisconsin, where the revenue limit is eleven thousand three twenty-five per student. Right up the road in Spooner and Superior, those revenue limits are the same, but Bayfield, sixty miles to our north, is at sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and just north of them, South Shore is at eighteen thousand three hundred forty-five dollars per student. Why should students sixty miles away be valued fifty percent more than their colleagues or peers here in Hayward? Now, Governor Evers is proposing twelve thousand four hundred dollars per student. That does not reach that important milestone and in the conversations with his senior staff members, there's no magic to that number, but our number allows you to reach that important ninety percent within ten percent milestone. Some have asked us what's more important, low revenue increases or special education funding? We've been advocating around the low revenue issue for thirty years. It closes a thirty-year deficit in funding that's frankly unfair and uncompetitive. It allows local school boards to raise levies, it's revenue limit authority. It doesn't create the revenue limit amount. It allows local boards to make a decision about how to hide, to raise their levies in concert with their taxpayers. Last time you added thirteen twenty-five per student, you paired it with five hundred fifty million dollars in equalization aid and that resulted in just a one percent tax levy increase in school districts. We hope you do it again, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Teri Noel, I live in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. We're here to advocate for more special education funding. My son Micah has special needs and is ten years old. Micah was born without any indication of special needs, but he was soon diagnosed with failure to thrive and global developmental delay. At age one, he had a feeding tube placed to provide all of his nutrition because he wasn't able to eat or drink enough to grow. At age two and a half, he was diagnosed with autism. Then we did whole exome genetic testing and he was diagnosed with a rare genetic disorder called OTS2, which is a deletion on his seventh chromosome. This diagnosis encompassed his autistic features, feeding issues, intellectual disability and a lack of verbal communication. But this is only part of who he is. He is the sweetest boy you will ever meet. He is innocent and pure, not a mean bone in his body. His cognitive level is around a two or a three-year-old, much lower for language, but he is fully capable of running around and doing all the physical activities of a child his age. His public education started at age three. He attended a playgroup at a local 4K school and received OTPT speech and social interaction with peers. At age four, he went to 4K and received the same types of support. Eau Claire is a big enough city to provide these types of specialized supports for kids with special needs. When Micah started kindergarten, he didn't go to our neighborhood school. Instead, he attended a cluster site elementary school, which was staffed with all the specialists he would need. He took a special bus and had a one-on-one aide with him on the bus. All of this costs a lot of extra money. At school, he has around fourteen staff members who assist him. Some of those are his classroom teacher, special education teacher, five to six special education assistants, art music gym teachers, adaptive FIED, OTPT speech and general school assistants. Some of the specialized care he requires, tube feeding for breakfast and lunch, ProLico Go app on an iPad as a communication device, bathroom assistance and one-on-one assistant all day long. For us, this has been a very positive experience, but I know that other neighborhood schools in Eau Claire often struggle to support their special education students, especially those who are at a more middle level of support. Many times, there aren't enough SEAs or special education teachers. I also know families in rural districts outside of Eau Claire who struggle with the lack of support their students need. Micah's education is very expensive. Next year, he will be in fifth grade and then he will go to a middle school after that that is also a cluster site. He will continue to receive high level of supports and this pattern will continue into high school and until age twenty-one because of his disability status. Without these supports, Micah would not have made the gains he has over the years and he would not have the chance to interact with his peers or develop life skills that he will need. Everyone who meets Micah is instantly charmed by his sweet spirit. He is well-known by the students and staff at his school and even in the community. He is a bright light and has so much to offer. I only hope that his intensive special education needs will be funded in a sustainable way and that all special education students in the Chippewa Valley will someday have fully funded special education support. Thank you.
My name is Tiffany Schano. Melissa Custer and I began the Learn in My Shoes campaign to bring stories like Terri's and now hundreds of other families of children with disabilities navigating special education from across Wisconsin to light. I personally compiled and read each story and I will never be the same. Our children require help to access their right to a public education, yet the legislature has yet to acknowledge their rights or potential with the full funding necessary to provide that access safely and consistently. Shifting the responsibility of funding our neighborhood schools and the quality of that school to local homeowners through referendum isn't sustainable. Currently, the legislature generously provides private voucher schools with ninety percent special education reimbursement, proving you all believe sixty percent reimbursement is feasible and reasonable. It's time the legislature works for families. This budget, our public schools deserve at least sixty percent, some sufficient, special education reimbursement. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the committee. I'm Seated Deal Public Policy and Advocacy Director for NAMI Wisconsin, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I'm here to ask your support in the form of forty-one million dollars for the Community Support Program, or CSP, operated by counties and tribes and also twelve million dollars for the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. CSP serves people with serious mental illness. It's covered by Medicaid and administered by counties and tribes. It's based on the Program of Assertive Community Treatment, a world-renowned approach developed here in Wisconsin. The legislature codified CSP into statute in nineteen eighty-three, requiring counties within the limits of available funds to offer services to people with serious mental illness. That's wonderful, but that means that small counties like this county where we are right now must come up with a forty percent non-federal Medicaid match. We're asking the state to take responsibility for that Medicaid match and make CSP available equally throughout all of the, or equitably throughout the state. This will reduce hospitalization, reduce criminal justice involvement and promote quality of life. We also ask your support for the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. When this national lifeline, each state operates their own, when it was stood up in 2022, we did so with COVID relief grants. Those grants were abruptly ended in March of this year and we're asking for your ongoing support in the form of twelve million dollars GPR ongoing for this lifeline that answers more than eight thousand calls and texts and chats each month. Ninety-nine percent of those are resolved on the call with the counselor and for those at imminent risk, they call out, dispatch law enforcement and/or EMT. Both of these programs are of vital importance to people with mental illness. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Kimberly Valcheck. I live in Eau Claire, Wisconsin and I'm here as a member of Jonah, but I'm also here as a grandmother representing my eight-year-old grandson Carter. Carter is a special needs child. As an infant and toddler, he was slow to develop. Testing by his doctor indicated that he had elevated levels of lead in his blood. In first and second grade, learning, his learning and behavior problems developed and his teacher tried to manage things for him in the classroom. However, he ended up spending many hours each week in the office instead of his classroom. His mom requested an evaluation last school year and also this past fall. It was finally begun, the process took about five months, over one semester. It was determined Carter has autism. This past February, an IEP was put in place for him finally and he is receiving physical therapy as well as occupational therapy and he has an aide that helps him in the classroom with needs that he has. Recently, using a talk-to-text app on an iPad, he wrote his first story. He's in third grade. Carter should have had an earlier intervention. The IEP should have been put in place within ninety days of the request. Special education is drastically underfunded in Wisconsin public schools. Eau Claire public schools are reimbursed at about twenty-eight percent, while schools receiving vouchers are reimbursed at ninety percent. Carter's school has four third-grade classes with twenty-five to thirty students in each. The school psychologist serves two schools. It's no wonder his intervention was delayed. There's a shortage of financial and staff resources. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, hello chairpersons and members of the committee. My name is Samantha Lottz and I serve as the Personal Assistance Services Program Director for Compass IL. We serve ten counties within western Wisconsin. Caregivers are essential to in-home personal care, supporting older adults and those with disabilities to engage in daily activities. In-person, in-home care workers help prevent the need for more costly care in hospitals, nursing homes or other institutional settings, resulting in significant savings to the state per day per each individual. Compass IL is seeking support for a forty-eight percent increase in the personal care rate to raise the rate to thirty-six fifty-two per hour to help us address the community workforce crisis and adequately cover the true costs of providing care. This increase would enable caregiver, caregiving agencies to offer competitive wages, comprehensive and necessary training and full-time employment. Additionally, it would help reduce the state's costs associated with nursing homes, institutions and unnecessary hospitalizations. Compass IL also requests support for an increased RN visit rate. Registered nurses are required for all personal care consumers and the current rate of fifty-two dollars and seventy-two cents per visit is insufficient. We propose an increase to two hundred and nine dollars per visit. Currently, Compass IL has a waiting list of twenty consumers and those are consumers who know how to reach out for help and they are unable to access personal care due to the shortage of caregivers and the appropriate funding to support their needs. We have received feedback from consumers who have gone, who have gone without bathing for up to seven weeks because they haven't had any assistance to bathe. Everyone deserves access to care in their own homes and communities. Increasing the Medicaid personal care rate by forty-eight percent to cover the cost of care is a crucial step toward assisting Wisconsin's older population and those with disabilities. With the baby boomer generation now entering the stage where they require care, it is critical to ensure that they have access to in-home services. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Northwoods, everyone. Co-Chair Senator Markline, Co-Chair Representative Born and members of the committee. Hello, my name is Catherine Elkert and I'm the Library System Director for the Northern Waters Library Service and I'm here today representing all of my librarians and the Wisconsin Library Association, along with specifically my colleagues from the Northern Library Systems and those systems, two systems, represent over seventy libraries here in northern Wisconsin. First, I want to sincerely thank you all for your past support of public libraries and public library systems in Wisconsin. Your investment has helped ensure that libraries continue to be a welcome space for learning opportunities and connection for all of our residents. Wisconsin has had a proud tradition of collaboration and nowhere is that more evident than in the relationship between the state, our public library systems and our public libraries. Together, we uphold a sacred promise that every person in every community, whether from our largest cities to our smallest rural towns, can access the resources they need to learn, grow and thrive. Libraries are essential. They're essential infrastructure for our rural communities, keeping our people connected and informed. I'm here today to simply say that libraries matter and your continued support makes a real difference in the lives of Wisconsinites, especially here in our northern rural communities. I'm going to step aside and here's my colleague Dee.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us, I really appreciate that. My name is Dee Barabee and my life has been transformed by Wisconsin libraries. Without any doubt, I grew up in Chicago and I frequented the South Chicago branch. As an adult living in Wisconsin, my library was in Roameli, where I found not only wonderful resources, but a guide to the world of reading. The connection from this Wisconsin library has absolutely enabled me to dream of what the world can be. My, hang on, my husband Joseph, my husband Joseph, who is now gone, also felt the same way. The Melon Library has enabled him to write A Journey Into Melon, a history of the city of Melon and its surrounding area. It won a Wisconsin State Historical Society Award in nineteen eighty-six. The Melon Library helped him by getting the microfiche copies that he needed to, to research local newspapers from the last hundred years. My children, who are now adults, also became lifelong learners because of the library. On a visit to the Melon Library and the History Museum, author David Robleski chose Melon as a setting for the story of Edgar Sawtelle and Familiaries after seeing A Journey Into Melon. The story of Edgar Sawtelle and Familiaries went on to become Oprah's Book Picks of the Year. I am a lifelong learner and the libraries in Wisconsin have been a constant in my journey. Instead of focusing on parenting as I did when I was younger, I know I am learning now how to crochet, embroider and build community through my library, the Osceola Public Library.
Right now, someone in a local library, a small business owner, is using the fast and stable internet in a comfortable study room. A homeschool family is checking out dozens of books that have arrived from different libraries through the courier system and their shared consortium. Students are using databases from Badger Link to complete a homework assignment. People of all ages are connecting at a library program. But local libraries don't do this on their own. They have support from their library system. Our library systems provide local library staff an abundant variety of training opportunities to keep us skilled and well-informed. Our library systems provide consultation and support. They help libraries, share resources and offer fast and free internet to our patrons. The state aid for library services is incredibly important and it helps your local library service community well. We'd like to ask anyone in the audience who has a library card or supports their local library to stand up at this time. And we thank all of you for your continued support of library services in Wisconsin. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Joint Finance Committee. My name is Kalen Kambers and I'm from Chippewa Falls. I'm a former childcare provider, a past parent coach and I currently work for Wisconsin Early Childhood Association where I engage with providers and parents across our state on childcare issues. I'm here today because Wisconsin's childcare system is in a crisis and the impact is hitting families, providers, businesses across our state. Right now, families are paying more for childcare than they are for housing. That's simply not sustainable. We're losing an estimated four to six billion in productivity every year because parents are forced to reduce their hours or leave the workforce entirely. At the same time, early educators who are the backbone of this system are among the lowest-paid workers in Wisconsin. The median wage is just thirteen seventy-eight an hour and it's even lower for family childcare providers. Nearly two-thirds of business owners agree that access to childcare is critical for their employees. Yet, over the past decade, Wisconsin's lost twenty-six percent of its regulated childcare programs. And according to the UW-Madison Institute for Research on Poverty, more than eleven hundred additional programs are now at risk of closing. Thousands of providers expect to lose staff, serve fewer children or raise tuition just to keep their doors open. Meanwhile, parents are scrambling, businesses are struggling to hire and retain workers and the communities you represent are feeling the consequences. These are real Wisconsinites, real stories, real lives. Just this month, on April sixteenth, we witnessed an incredible show of support for childcare at the Advocacy Day in Madison. At least three hundred fifty people, providers, parents, community leaders, business owners and childcare champions from all corners of the state came together to meet with more than ninety percent of state-elected officials or their staffers. The energy and commitment displayed by everyone involved underscored the situation we face. We're asking for four hundred and eighty million investment in childcare in the 2025-27 state budget. This funding is not just about childcare. It's about supporting families, stabilizing our workforce and strengthening Wisconsin's economy. When childcare works, Wisconsin works. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for valuing community engagement and for your service to our community. My name is Amanda Bab, I'm with the Eau Claire Tenant Landlord Resource Center. Providing funding for services and housing makes for stable communities and families. Please keep funding that has already been allocated to homelessness and service programs and support items in the budget for consideration for increase. Apart from the moral imperative of caring for Apart from the moral imperative of caring for our neighbor, I will focus on the municipal costs of not sheltering those experiencing homelessness. Without safe shelter, individuals experiencing homelessness will cost our community from the overuse of mainstream service systems. From hospital stays and emergency healthcare services, emergency medical service calls, law enforcement calls, arrests, and incarceration, business disruption, and many others. In Wisconsin, the estimated annual cost of homelessness per individual ranges from thirty to fifty thousand dollars. I don't have enough time to list the budget items which apply to homelessness, but please support funding homelessness prevention programs, affordable housing, housing assistance, discrimination prevention, housing assistance for veterans, and many others. Thank you again for valuing community engagement and for your service to our community. We are better together.
Good morning. My name is Chris Hambach Boyle. I'd like to thank Chairperson Born and Markline and the Joint Finance Committee. I have been here many times over the years. I am a proud graduate of the Action Public School District. It was a long time ago. I, first of all, would like to ask you for ninety percent for special education reimbursement because that is what the special education voucher allows private schools to have. I feel the parity should be the same. And I'd like to conclude today with a little information for you on the voucher programs, mainly northwest Wisconsin I will speak to. I figured out this senate district data from twenty-three, senate district thirty-one, twenty-five, and ten. They cover about one-hundred-and-forty-eight school districts, and they divert about twenty-five-point-seven million dollars to the private schools within their areas. And that's just those four senate districts. I've provided all those senators with this data prior to this joint finance hearing. I feel we need to work together on this data and know this data so we know what we're doing going forward. This is the last budget before the privatization caps come off. There will be no economic guidelines for usage after that time. Millionaires can use a voucher. That's the diversion there of twenty-five-point-seven million now. It will get bigger. If this is not fixed in this budget, not one legislator or legislative staffer I talk to will predict what will happen, especially when you put the dismal special education reimbursement on top of this. I will make that prediction today. As prentice who just passed their referendum on the third try, recently asked their legislators and community, "Don't let us fade away." But that is exactly what will happen. Every time a district does not pass the referendum, and the gaps get bigger, and kids lose, and communities lose. Please do the moral thing and fund your public schools. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here. My name is Jeremy Gregert. I served for six years on the Eau Claire City Council up until last year. I'm here to speak on the importance of state investments in transportation, making sure that people of any age, income, or ability are able to get around in our state. I live in Eau Claire without a car, and I walk and bike and take transit to get where I need to go. This past weekend, I went with my partner on a bike ride to Durand, which is about sixty miles round trip from Eau Claire on the Chippewa River State Trail. I had a beautiful last weekend for that. And the route is really amazing, but the trail condition is really poor and it really needs repair and investment. There are a couple of programs at the state level that really help build new trails as well as maintain trails and bike and pedestrian access. And those are the Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, and the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Fund. Those are just two major examples. You know, we spend hundreds of dollars on our trip to Durand in a very rural part of our state. And there's a lot of other rural places just outside of Eau Claire that I would visit a lot more often, you know, if there were transportation options available, whether that be safe bike routes or public transportation. Eau Claire does have a bus service in Eau Claire and Altoona, but it is limited. There's no Sunday service, and there's no, like, regional service. And we need the legislature to enable regional transportation authorities, or RTAs, to be able to help local communities connect with each other with public transit. And we need at least a four percent increase in our transit operating assistance. The legislature can really make a big difference on this issue as transportation is about as expensive as housing for a lot of families, so thanks so much.
Hi.
We're going to pause for a moment, ma'am, so that we can call up the next speaker.
Honors speakers.
Of course.
Thank you.
So we have a group with Special Olympics of Chad Hirschner, Julia Benker, I think it's B-E-N-N-K-A-R, Wisconsin Early Childhood Actions. Ashley Demuth, Sam Liebert, L-I-E-B-E-R-T. All voting is local action. Rida Simmons. Looks like we have Group Action Wisconsin, Joanne Jarbin, Megan Nugget, Co. O'Neill Film Production Corporation. Looks like we have another group of Creative Wisconsin with Justin Fonterra, Rice Haake, Carl Morin, School District of Maple. We have the group AARP, Martin Hernandez. We have Chancellor UW Superior Renee Watcher, Ryan Raymond, Wisconsin State Public Defender, and Jill Rankin. And then lastly, whoever signed a slip for the Wisconsin Indigenous Housing and Economic Development Corp. at eight-ten, or, I'm sorry, ten-oh-eight, please meet me over on the side.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kristin Dupree. I want to first thank you all for the opportunity to address you today. I am here on behalf of NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness, to talk about the importance of the nine-eight-eight Wisconsin Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Established in July of 2022, nine-eight-eight, the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is a national network of more than two-hundred crisis centers that help thousands of people overcome crisis situations daily. I was thrilled when this program began and started, I started bombarding my friends on social media to get the word out. I'm very passionate about mental health. I consider myself a safe person to have conversations about and around mental health. But this was amazing. Nine-eight-eight provides twenty-four-seven confidential support to people in suicide crisis or mental health-related distress and could possibly be the only support that someone may have, which means it is vitally important to continue its funding by allocating twelve million dollars to its program. How it works is by calling or texting nine-eight-eight, you'll, excuse me, connect to a mental health professional with the Lifeline Network. I have friends that have made calls to nine-eight-eight and have received the support they need on the other end. Support, acceptance, and caring and trained ear. In 2020 alone, the U.S. had one death by suicide about every eleven minutes. And for people aged ten through thirty-four years, suicide is the leading cause of death. What we are proposing is that we, Wisconsin, support the nine-eight-eight Wisconsin Lifeline for the long term in the means of twelve million. Additionally, we propose to index the allocation to inflation to ensure financial viability of nine-eight-eight into the future. Please protect all of nine-eight-eight. Please fund twenty million dollars to those in crisis. There are lives at stake. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. My name is Tammy Simon. I am the Director of Tourism for the Menominee Area Chamber and Visitor Center. I am here today to speak in favor of several items before you. First, I encourage you to invest additional dollars in the Department of Tourism, including taking the action necessary to make the Office of Outdoor Recreation a permanent entity. Outdoor recreation is an eleven-billion-dollar industry in our state. Continuing to support outdoor activities and encourage visitors to experience our natural spaces will help to grow our economy for years to come. Secondly, I encourage you to support funding for arts and cultural opportunities through the Wisconsin Arts Board and by establishing the Rural Creative Economy Grant Program as well as supporting SB one-seventy-three and AB one-fifty-nine. In addition, I encourage you to support the creation of the Office of Film and Creative Industries, helping to drive economic growth in Wisconsin film and creative sectors. Arts are critical to improving quality of life and quality of community, helping to attract employees and retaining workforce. Lastly, I ask that you support the bonding of the Recreation Complex Renovation Project at the UW Stout. Stout is an integral part of the Menominee community. Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Julia Benker. I'm a childcare provider at Miss Julia's Schoolia in Eau Claire, that's in my home. I spend most of my time with young children and with their thoughts and their feelings. And I guide experiences that allow the children to feel their big feelings in a way that is safe, such as feeling angry. Like, when a child takes a toy and a child gets upset, the child and I work through the feelings. We take deep breaths. And then we talk with the other child, and we resolve it and move on in our play. That is the day in a childcare center. So much of the day is spent like that. So we work through conflict, and together we continue on in our learning and play. Childcare providers provide care to children that benefit them the rest of their lives. Children with a solid foundation have the tools they need to understand who they are, understand more about who other people are, and understand their place in our community and in the world. Because we are educated in how to be loving, responsive caregivers, childcare providers know how to help these minds figure out how to be human and how to get along with other humans. As you know, childcare providers make very little. I average five dollars an hour for the work that I do for my children. But instead of investing in childcare right now, we're investing in the penal system. The budget covers over twelve-hundred dollars a day in juvenile detention center, whereas there's zero dollars per day for children. Right now, for the budget, we're fighting for a little more than two dollars per day per child for the four-hundred-and-eighty million dollars. So as you can see, this investment would be life-changing for childrens and families and the people who provide care for them. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Co-chairs Markline and Born, and members of the Joint Finance Committee, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Chad Hirschner, and I am honored to serve as the President and CEO of Special Olympics Wisconsin. We are here today to ask for your support of the three-hundred-thousand-dollar-per-year increase to Special Olympics Wisconsin in the Governor's DPI budget and to ask that you provide one million per year to Special Olympics Wisconsin in the DHS budget. Annually, we have more than two-hundred-and-twenty events that serve more than fourteen thousand athletes in every county of our state. Since 2022, we've increased the number of our Unified Champion Schools from seventy-one to one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, and we have trained more than three hundred athlete leaders. Special Olympics is the world's largest public health organization for individuals with intellectual disabilities. Annually, Special Olympics Wisconsin provides eighteen-hundred free health screenings across eight different disciplines. Thanks to a one-time grant from DHS, last year we were able to expand our health trainings from three to sixty-five. As a result, more than thirteen-hundred medical students and providers now know how to work with individuals with ID. The Governor's proposed DPI budget provides an additional three-hundred-thousand per year to Special Olympics Wisconsin. With this funding, we will expand our Unified Champion Schools, invest in our sports and training, and deepen our athlete leadership programs. We're also asking the Joint Finance Committee to provide one million per year in the DHS budget to expand our health programming. Did you know Special Olympics Wisconsin reduces Medicaid costs in our state? According to a study published by the Waisman Center, Special Olympics Wisconsin athletes who participate in our Healthy Athletes Program cost Medicaid three times less than those non-Special Olympics athletes. Now to share their personal stories, I'd like to introduce my friends Matt and Joey.
Hello, my name is Matthew Amshler. I'm twenty-seven years old. I live in Rice Lake with my family. I've been in Special Olympics for eight years. I compete year-round in softball, bowling, basketball, and track. I started track two years ago. Figured I'd give it a try. I compete in the four-by-one-hundred-meter relay, hundred-meter, and shot putt. I earned a gold medal for shot putt. I have a total of three medals in track to date, which I have with me today. I didn't know I was actually going to truly enjoy it. I never would have experienced track if it wasn't for Special Olympics. As our founder Eunice Kennedy Shriver once said, "Special Olympics is nice, but it is also important." People know Special Olympics as a sports program, but they don't know it is a health, school, and leadership program. Through the Special Olympics, I've taken leadership courses to become a public speaker, a health messenger, and to serve on the statewide Athletic Leadership Council. These opportunities, along with my sports travel, have taken me all over the state. They also make me a stronger member of my own committee, where I not only work for the school district, but I'm the voice of the Warriors baseball team and a manager for the Rice Lake Warriors varsity football team. The impact of all this is that I'm standing before you today as an advocate for people of all disabilities. I can only imagine what might have happened had I known about Special Olympics earlier if it had happened, been offered as of my school. Please support these programs. We can reach younger athletes and more athletes with this important program. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Meyer. I am from Rice Lake, Wisconsin. I have a passion to inspire other people to live healthier lives. I learned this through twenty-three years of involvement in Special Olympics. I was born three months early, so I only weighed two pounds eleven ounces. My heartbeat was only four beats a minute for the first two and a half weeks of my life. I had severe heart surgery and double hernia surgery. As I was born, I had severe sclerosis and genitic disease, so you can just imagine the obstacles I had to overcome with my diagnosis, but I was still determined to live a normal life. Through Special Olympics Wisconsin, I have joined sports like basketball, cornhole softball, powerlifting, and bowling. I may be small, but I can deadlift over three hundred pounds. I have earned many medals in Special Olympics, but the one I have around my neck today is when I wear so proudly, so even after twenty-three years, you can still find a lot of joy. But I won this medal, gold medal, in overtime in the champion game, which we won by five points. So in addition to my success on the field and playing sports, Special Olympics offers a lot of leadership classes in Zoom meetings and stuff for athletes to participate in. As I became an athlete and coach, athlete-health messenger, I was able to feel a lot of my passions with other athletes. Special Olympics Wisconsin has been a big part of my life in the rural Wisconsin program, which can be limited. Please support Special Olympics Wisconsin.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Jardine. I'm from Superior, Wisconsin, and I'm here with a group of filmmakers. And we are part of Action Wisconsin, which is a coalition to bring film incentives and a state film office to our state. I personally am a photographer. I do behind-the-scenes photography and set photography, and I photograph lead actors. I am also a location scout. And I get this work mostly in Minnesota because I have a studio now in Duluth, Minnesota, which makes me rebatable under their incentive programs. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't get hired. So I'm going to turn this over to my colleague. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I'm actually originally from Kentucky, and I moved to Superior about four years ago. Jodine actually found me. I was kind of just working random jobs as a mom. And she pulled me aside and said, "Work for film." I didn't even think that was an opportunity that could be had. So I started working over in Duluth, Minnesota. And I became a set designer. And a set designer basically just sets the stage for the movie. We go around and we buy props for movies. And so we basically get a budget. They tell us how much that we can spend. And we go around and we try to make it as local as we can possibly make it, stay within our means. And we shopped places like Home Goods, Goodwill, local shops, you know, small mom-and-pop shops. And I think we spent close to twenty-five thousand dollars on that movie set that I worked on. I am not able to actually work in those movie sets anymore because I'm in Superior, Wisconsin, where we don't get the incentives in Superior. I know that affects a lot of people in Wisconsin. I know that affects a lot of people in Wisconsin, and I know that there's a lot of talented people that would like to be on movie sets. Again, I am a mom. I have a very strict schedule, and I was able to actually pull along my girls with me on some of these movie sets and make this a living for myself.
Good morning. My name is Ko O'Neal. I'm from Menominee, Wisconsin. I actually grew up there and played on the state basketball team that lost to Wauwato to East by twenty-eight in nineteen eighty-six. I had to move to the West Coast and worked in films for twenty years, and now I'm back here teaching at the University of Wisconsin Stoute. One of the things that I've noticed, I worked on the State Film Board in the state of Oregon for five years, and the amount of production that comes in and a lot of things that people don't talk about when they're thinking about tax incentives is that it's revenue-neutral. We don't spend money. It's not something that goes into the budget that costs money. The credits go back once the money is spent here and spent on things like rentals, air conditioners, you know, lift machines, catering, legal services. All of those things happen in the community in which the production's happening. And for every giant movie, like, you know, like adventurous movies that's shot in Atlanta, there are dozens and dozens of everything from Hallmark Christmas films to advertising or TV shows that happen in smaller communities, and we're kind of losing out to that, especially to Minnesota, Illinois, where they make Minnesota five dollars on every dollar they give as a credit, they've injected five dollars in the community. So in Illinois, it's more like seven dollars, seven to one for the credit to the to the actual money that comes into the state. So and as an instructor now, I'm seeing a lot of students having to go to Minnesota, Illinois, any other state with the decentralization of film production now. It's not happening in the coast so much anymore. It's happening everywhere around the world. This is a great opportunity for our state to step up and get a tax incentive and bring people to state to to make productions. Thanks a lot.
Good morning. My name is Brayden. I am a writer-director from Hayward, and me and my crew are currently shooting a feature film here in Hayward. So these tax incentives would give a lot more opportunities for us to hire local crew, pay local locations, businesses, and for example, something even like catering can bring in thousands of extra dollars for local restaurants during a production. It would also help us independent filmmakers be able to find investors and budgets in order to be able to provide these jobs. We've been met with nothing but support from Hayward, and we would appreciate you taking a look at this, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexander Henderson. I'm a student filmmaker down in Milwaukee. Trip to Hayward was worth it. I want to help out Brayden with his productions here, man. It's it's we got I want to give back to the community. I believe that filmmaking can give back to the community. There's a lot of money in film. There's a lot of money in the entertainment industry. It's I want to get that money to the local communities and the statewide communities. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rita Simon. I'm a retired family practice physician from Chippewa Falls. And as a physician in Chippewa Falls, I cared for many women and helped bring about two thousand babies into the world. So I know the great importance of keeping women healthy before, during, and after pregnancy, after the babies are born, and access to readily available health care is especially critical to ensure healthy mothers and babies and thus healthy families. Right now, women in the United States of America are more likely to die from complications related to pregnancy and childbirth than any other of their peer groups in higher-income countries in the world. About two-thirds of maternal deaths occur more than sixty days postpartum. And according to the Center for Disease Control data, almost twenty-seven percent of maternal deaths occurred in that forty-three to three hundred sixty-five-day postpartum window. And eighty percent of those pregnancy-related postpartum issues are related to conditions that are preventable. Extending the postpartum Medicaid coverage has emerged around this country as a way for states to fight maternal mortality rates, and it's been working. Congress previously gave states a permanent option to accept federal funds to extend postpartum Medicaid coverage to twelve months. As of now, only Wisconsin and Arkansas have refused to take that extension. April twenty-second, a week ago, not even, the state senate here in Wisconsin voted to pass the bill to extend postpartum Medicaid to twelve months, and only one Republican senator voting no. And yet, Assembly Speaker Robin Voss continues to label this bill as an expansion of welfare, stating, quote, "My position has been fairly clear from the very beginning. I never supported an expansion of welfare, and I can't imagine that I would ever support one," unquote. Being pro-life means supporting and ensuring good health care for all mothers before, during, and after pregnancy. So please do what is right for Wisconsin women and families and pass that postpartum Medicaid extension bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to address the Joint Finance Committee today. My name is Greg Gentl. I'm the Director of the Acre Genasiola, Wisconsin. We are a nonprofit empowering communities through creativity, mental health wellness, and environmental stewardship. I'm here on behalf of my organization and our community to ask you to make the arts and the creative economy a priority in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven budget by supporting some key funding recommendations supporting this sector of our economy. I would not have this support today if it weren't for the Wisconsin Arts Board. I'd like you to support an increasing investment in the arts opportunities throughout the state with the goal of sixty-eight cents per capita funding totaling two hundred and ninety-five million dollars each year. The Wisconsin Arts Board is a critical link to communities and the creative sector across our state. The arts and creative sectors support nearly sixteen thousand jobs in Wisconsin and generated a hundred and ninety million dollars in local, state, and federal government revenue in twenty-twenty-two. The economic impact of the creative economy and that industry in Wisconsin is eleven point nine billion dollars, while nationally it is one point one trillion, contributing four point three percent of the US GDP. An increase in investment means more economic and civic impact which benefits us all. Let's increase funding for the arts. Next, I'd like to thank Senators Quinn and Testan for their leadership of Senate Bill one seven-three and Assembly Bill one five-nine to establish a new Rural Wisconsin Economy Grant Program. Based in the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, this bill will further investment in creative economies across rural Wisconsin. As Osceola is a small rural border town on the Saint Croix River, directly across this treasured national scenic riverway lies Franconia Sculpture Park in the small rural town of Schaefer. Like the acreage, Franconia is a nonprofit, leading arts and creative experiences in our region. Now, thank goodness that the Packers have dominated the Vikings over the past several decades because Minnesota kicks our butts when it comes to arts funding. Franconia is there because of their state's investment in the arts and the creative economy. I want the acreage and other creative organizations like Festival Theater and the Wood Arts Art School in Saint Croix Falls, my neighbors to the north, to have that same competitive advantage that Franconia Sculpture Park and other rural community organizations in Minnesota enjoy. Funding Senate Bill one seven-three and Assembly Bill one five-nine will move that needle and provide critical economic support for rural arts and creative programming in the Saint Croix Valley and across rural communities across the state. I've got some other colleagues I'd like to share their thoughts to.
Hi there, I'm Carolyn Perry. I am from Hayward, Wisconsin, and I am President of the Park Center, formerly the Park Theater. I'm part of this group asking for funding for the arts and creative community. And rather than go through all the numbers that you've already heard, although I'm sure some people would like to hear them, I'm going to give you the practical experience here on the ground to show that the creative economy enriches all our lives in a number of ways. The Park Theater was built in nineteen forty-eight and has been entertaining our community since. First, as a movie theater, and then with dedicated support from the community and the Arts Board, added a soundboard, lights, and a stage in two thousand and nine to become a performing arts center. The park continued to delight patrons with musical performances and theater until twenty-twenty, when we all experienced the Greek tragedy of COVID. That it forced us to shut the theater down for several seasons. We were able to come back largely through the support of a Gracius benefactor and the community, who once again stepped in to help with volunteer time and project support. Most recently, we have asked community leaders to tell us how to best improve the park. The input was unanimous, enlarged the lobby so that patrons can visit with one another during the intermission and after performances. This tells us that the sense of community and the enjoyment that comes with connection is still very important to all of us. In the words of a recent transplant from Minnesota, "We chose to move here once we saw the park and recognized the importance of the arts in Hayward. It's a hidden gem. Small performance venues like ours are all around the state, and we share the same story. All of our success depends on our ability to attract funding, spend the money wisely, and continually improve our business. As we grow, we can employ staff, expand our services, and continue to be a source of joy and connection in our communities." One final story. Get ready, it's gonna be the auctioneer. Did you know that a movie was made in Hayward in nineteen eighty-six? It was a slasher film that those were quite the rage in the eighties. A few years ago, we found it and its director, producer, and some actors and asked them to bring it to where the film was created. Now, each year during Muskie Fest, we do a showing of Bloodhook. People wear costumes, yell at the screen, and you should all come see it because we are trying to turn it into a cult favorite, and along with showing the show comes a lot of money for all the play. Thanks.
Thank you. It's hard to follow that one. My name's Sam Leibert, and I serve as the Wisconsin State Director for All Voting as Local Action. We are a nonpartisan organization that works to ensure that every eligible voter can cast their ballot freely, fairly, and safely. I'm also a former municipal clerk. I've seen firsthand what our local election officials are up against, the late nights, the logistical hurdles, and the increasing political pressures and the incredible work that they do to uphold our democracy despite it all. Today, I wanted to speak briefly about three common sense, cost-effective priorities that will strengthen our elections and support the people who run them. Number one, supporting for the Monday pre-processing bill. I strongly urge you to support legislation that allows clerks to begin pre-processing absentee ballots on the Monday before Election Day. A recent poll actually just came out in the past few days that shows that sixty-six percent of sixty-six percent of Wisconsinites agree on this, and when's the last time sixty-six percent of us agreed on anything? As a former municipal clerk, I can tell you that we don't want to be counting ballots until two AM when the public is demanding answers and the pressure is at peak. Pre-processing, not tabulating ballots early ensures faster, more accurate results, and reduces strain on already limited local staff. This isn't a partisan issue, it's a practical one. Most other states already allow this, and Wisconsin should as well. Number two, funding for Badger Books. We also urge you to increase funding for Badger Books, the state's electronic poll book system. These tools save time, reduce human error, and improve accessibility for both poll workers and voters. Also, number three, we'd also encourage you to expand support for in-person absentee voting, especially those for our smaller townships, which I know a lot of you represent. Investing resources to help our townships and small municipalities expand early voting options, especially areas where voters live miles from their polling places, helps them to navigate their work schedules or folks who may have limited transportation. So in closing, thank you for your time and for your service to the people of Wisconsin. These proposals are not about politics, they're about strengthening our trust, and I'll also plan on emailing all of you the full details of all these proposals. Thank you so much.
Chairpersons and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Ashley Demuth, CEO for the Menominee Area Chamber and Visitor Center. I'm here to express strong support for the UW Stout's request for bonding authority to renovate its recreation complex, the university's top capital budget priority. This project goes beyond updating an aging facility. It's a strategic, student-driven investment in health, inclusion, and economic development. The proposed renovation is fully funded by student-approved fees and private support with no taxpayer dollars being requested. It's also a top priority for the UW system, ranked number eight on the Board of Regions' capital budget list, highlighting a shared commitment to student success, accessibility, and high-quality campus infrastructure. The updated facility will add much-needed wellness, fitness, and instructional space while modernizing locker rooms to improve privacy, expand accessibility, and better accommodate athletic programs and community sporting events. UW Stout is more than a campus, it's a cornerstone of the Menominee community. The recreation complex regularly hosts tournaments, youth camps, and regional events that bring visitors to our area, support local businesses, and generates economic activity. This renovation ensures that we can continue to welcome those guests with dignity and functionality. Before closing, I'd like to also voice support for another important item on the Governor's budget, the proposal to make the Office of Outdoor Recreation permanent. As a local destination marketing organization, we've personally experienced the value that this office brings to communities like ours. By converting three project positions to permanent and providing ongoing funding, the state will ensure continued support for Wisconsin's outdoor recreation economy. The office is essential to growing local tourism, supporting workforce development, and helping small businesses thrive in every corner of our state. Thank you again for your time today and for your service on the Joint Finance Committee.
Bonjour, and welcome to the land of Anishinaabe. My name is Carl Morin. I'm the District Administrator for the School District of Maple. I'm a proud member of the Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chipwas, and I'm also proud to say my fourth great-grandfather was Chief Buffalo, the superior chief of the Chipwa tribes, who signed the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four on Madlin Island. I'm here to talk about my district today. The District of Maple is a rural district twenty-five miles east of the Twin Ports. We are a district that covers five hundred square miles. We have eleven townships, seventeen bus routes, and about twelve hundred and sixty students, four K through twelfth grade. We're rich in lake property, but our our children, our families are socially economically disadvantaged, all right? The funding formula does not work for us because we do not allow to get a lot of state funding. Most of our funding comes off of the taxpayers. But what I'm here to do is to ask, we need your help. We need you, we need you to help the schools of Northern Wisconsin, the schools, the School District of Maple. First thing is, if you could raise the revenue limits, where we could raise things, that would help offset some of our costs. Special education, raising that to sixty percent would help all of our kids. You know, I'll tell you something, the special, the students of special needs, there's some great kids there. They really know what they they do some amazing things every single day, and we need to help fund that. The last thing I want to talk to you about is our district is knocking it out of the park. We we are on a Ford exam, we are exceeding expectations in a lot of our buildings, we are doing a great job, and there's a lot of us schools up in northwestern Wisconsin that are doing the same thing. So thank you for coming up here. I know you got a tough job. Keep doing what you're doing. Wisconsin is the best state in the nation. It's beautiful, but you know what? We need to invest in our kids, invest their things. Senator Weinberger, thanks again for your service to our country and the military, appreciate it. Senator Quinn, thanks for coming for our visit. Everybody have a great day.
Good morning. Renee Walker, Chancellor, UW Superior. I'd like to join Senator Quinn and his legislative colleagues in welcoming you to this beautiful Northland. I'm asking for your support for the UW budget and thus student access, affordability, and quality. Superior is the northernmost comprehensive UW, and aside from LCO, the only four-year north of Highway twenty-nine. We are the anchor of the North, a territory, as the good senator knows, the size of New Hampshire, Vermont, and Rhode Island combined. Serving over twenty-eight hundred students and growing, we are deeply committed to our rural region. In the North, our students are as diverse as our territory is wide. Forty-five percent are first-gen, thirty-five percent are older than twenty-five, eighty-two percent have financial need, and we know from our personal visits to our rural communities that they are struggling to develop and keep talent. Via dual enrollment ECCP, summer camps, and outreach programs like Career Experience Days, we are partnering with our region's high schools, such as that here in Hayward, to map DPI career clusters to our academic programs, previewing careers in high demand to hundreds of high school students each year. Dual enrollment programs speed time to degree for our students, and they enter the workforce prepared. The tuition promise would also help keep this accessible. We host online degrees, certificates, micro-credentials, as well as online supports, such as telehealth, advising, and other services to aid the placebound, keeping people in their communities and growing local talent. Leadership, business, computer science, teacher education, and mental health programs like counseling serve over fourteen hundred placebound students. We're excited to have a master's in social work coming, and Senator Mark Line, she'll be glad to hear that accounting will still be online. Our students say it best, their online programs allow for opportunities while staying at home and working full-time. It's been more personal than I could have imagined through peers and professors. Together, we can ensure quality and access for those seeking to bloom where they're planted. Together, we can be Superior. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're gonna pause for a moment to the quick call for the next round.
We have Shawna Stoner, I believe, Ducks Unlimited, Jerry Green, Walter Lepart, School District of Gilman, Janet Zander, Chrissy Bamard, B-A-M-A-R-D, Matthew Tenick, T-E-N- T-E-N-E-Y-K, UW Superior, Rocco Paulson, UW Superior, Kate McCrimmon, M-A-C-C-R-I-M-M-O-N, Sarah Kazzell, Amy Starzicki, S-T-A-R-Z-E-C-K-I, Superior School District, Kim Pearson, and Greg Loek, L-O-E-K, UW Platteville, it looks like. And that was at 7:59 this morning.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, members of the Joint Finance Committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Jill Rankin. I'm the Executive Director for the Wisconsin Institute for Healthy Aging. We are a nonprofit organization serving the entire state of Wisconsin, and I am here today to voice my support for the Healthy Aging Grants. These are funds that would support the programs and practices and improve the health and well-being of older adults throughout the state of Wisconsin. We partner with several different Wisconsin counties and tribes throughout the state, and these programs that we work on are proven to reduce healthcare costs and have led to millions of dollars in savings. Since 2010, we have partnered with 600 local program provider organizations, trained over 2,000 program facilitators, and provided more than 5,000 workshops here in Wisconsin that have reached over 51,000 older adult participants. And based on our evidence-based proven health outcomes, we have saved $38 million here in healthcare costs with these programs. That's an average of over $2 million per year here in Wisconsin, which is super exciting. These healthcare savings also have incredible stories behind them, one of them being my own mother. Shortly after retirement, my mom fell in her home. I encouraged her to take our local stepping-on program, which is proven to reduce falls by 31%. So after taking stepping-on at her local Aging and Disability Resource Center, I noticed she was applying what she learned. She was doing strength and balance exercises, talking to her healthcare team about medication adjustments, and making some important home safety modifications. I can happily report that she has not had a fall since, and that's been over two years. So she can still watch my kids and still thrive in her home. As we age, we can maintain and even improve our health and our quality of life. We see so many lives improved with these programs. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Good morning, Joint Finance. My name's Ryan Raymond. I'm a Regional Attorney Manager for the State Public Defender's Office. I oversee our Eau Claire region, which runs from St. Croix County over to Eau Claire, from Buffalo and Pepin up to Barron and Rusk. So 10 counties in western Wisconsin. I felt that during the last budget, you all listened, and you wisely chose to fund the criminal justice system. And that was at a time when staffing numbers for public defenders and prosecutors were really at a crisis level. And I can tell you that after the pay increases in the last budget for public defenders and prosecutors, my region, three offices, came to a full staffing level, and it had been a very long time since that happened. And we maintained that until just recently. And I also think every prosecutor's office in my entire region came to full staffing levels at some point as well. So it's important, paying government attorneys' salaries that are competitive with private firms and with surrounding states is necessary for recruitment and retention, and I saw those effects in my 10 counties. I have fantastic, experienced lawyers that would have left the agency if it wasn't for the funding last time around. And we've had new attorneys that have applied to the Public Defender's Office because of that funding. So those pay increases in the last budget helped to stabilize the criminal justice system in Wisconsin. But now, we need to continue to fund attorney merit pay in this budget, both for public defenders and for prosecutors. If you don't, I think we will absolutely backslide in the progress we've made in recruiting and retaining high-quality attorneys and the progress that you've all made in stabilizing the criminal justice system. So please, fund merit pay for public defenders and continue stabilizing the criminal justice system. It's too important, and if we can't fill our positions and if we can't represent people, then prosecutions get delayed, or cases sit, and people sit without lawyers indefinitely. And what that does ultimately is has a profound effect on justice for the citizens of Wisconsin, and that includes both victims and defendants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Heather Ludzak. I could be here for half a dozen things. I'm the President of the Drummond School Board. I'm the Chamber Director for Cable. But what I'm here today is to talk about what it's like to be a caregiver in a very difficult situation as a small business owner. In 2017, my daughter was diagnosed with a four-centimeter brain tumor that was previously unseen. It was all very short notice. I had to walk away from my business of 20 years on the day of hunting opener to go out to take care of her. And it was indefinite. We had no idea, and it was definitely a life-or-death situation. I walked away from my business. I had 20 employees. I owned a restaurant. It was a busy place, and I had to just tell my employees either go on unemployment or make it happen. So I left, and for six months, over a lot of very difficult times in rehab with my daughter, I was gone from my business that I had run for 20 years, almost 20 years at that point. The cost to me as a small business owner, and someone who was contributing pretty heavily into the community, it cost me $30,000 just for the five months of this is just the payroll that I had to pay out to keep my business open. My husband couldn't be with me. He couldn't be with us, his daughter, because he had to work. Somebody. We were both self-employed. Somebody had to work and keep things going. So it is a huge burden on families, and I know so many people who have to give up their livelihood and their business to care for someone. And we all know that our aging population in this area is huge, especially up in the northern part of Wisconsin, where people are choosing to retire, and families are having to make the decision of someone giving up employment for caring for an ill parent, ill child, ill spouse. And we're just hoping that you will consider thinking about what it takes to help support those families, whether it's through taxes, et cetera. But she's here. She's doing well. She's recovered. And now I'm dealing with both a father with dementia issues and a mother-in-law who's in memory care. And it's a lot. And when you're a small business owner, you are taken. That's your option. What else can you do? And I just thank you guys for listening today. Appreciate it.
Hello. Thank you all so much for listening to us this morning. My name is Martin Hernandez. I am Associate State Director for Advocacy with ARP Wisconsin. We've been all across the state making the ask for a caregiver tax credit to allow for caregivers to recoup up to $500 in non-refundable tax refund from the state. And hopefully, that's something that we can get passed in this upcoming budget. We've been in Kekana. We'll be in Wausa tomorrow. And so we'll continue to share caregiver stories from across the state. Unfortunately, not a unique story, but we know one of countless from across the state. And so again, thank you so much for listening to us.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Wally Leepart. I'm the Superintendent at the School District of Gilman. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to listening to those that you serve. I'm here on behalf of the district to share our concerns with the budget, and I know that this is one that's shared by many rural schools in under-resourced districts across the state. Gilman is facing significant financial uncertainty. We receive about $568,000 in federal funds annually, but proposed changes and cancellations of federal support are a real threat. Meanwhile, a state funding formula that's remained inequitable for over 30 years has left us dependent on operational referendums just to maintain basic services. Despite a 29% increase in property values over the past three years, 53% of our students live in economically disadvantaged households. Rising property values without growth or increased enrollment make us appear to be property-rich. On paper, though, because this costs us about $200,000 in lost state aid, and in reality, we're not a wealthy district. State aid per pupil in Gilman dropped from $6,464 last year to $6,114 this year. That's a $400 decrease in state aid per student. If current trends continue, by 2029, we'll receive only $4,182 per student. These reductions are not simply a result of declining enrollment, but a direct consequence of how formulas penalize property value per member regardless of a community's need. At the same time, vouchers and open enrollments are pulling significant dollars away from the district, with over $10,000 for a voucher for K-8 and $14,000 for special education. I recognize that you have a difficult job ahead of you, and there are many consequent requests for funding. We ask that you fund the $12,650 for low-revenue limit. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Joint Finance Committee, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Janet Zander, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Greater Wisconsin Agency on Aging Resources and the Wisconsin Aging Advocacy Network. 90% of older adults say they want to stay in their own homes for as long as possible to age in place. For some, their plan to age in place is obstructed by concerns of safety, ability to move around their home, cognitive decline, and challenges with daily activities like bathing, dressing, and meal preparation. Programs and services such as Meals on Wheels, Transportation, Caregiver Respite, Falls Prevention Classes, and Benefits and Options Counseling are crucial in helping older adults to manage their chronic health conditions, reduce their falls risk, and obtain the necessary care and support they need to live independently, prevent premature institutionalization, and delay the need for Medicaid. These home and community-based services make it possible for older adults to realize their goal of aging in place and help to bend down the Medicaid cost curve. A growing aging population, increasing needs, and rising costs have eroded the purchasing power of these Aging and Aging and Disability Network programs. It also has diminished our ability to deliver timely, cost-saving services to older adults and family caregivers. Wait lists and service delays create barriers to aging in place and can push older adults to leave their homes prematurely. We respectfully request your support of investments to help people age in place, which is good for older Americans, their families, our communities, and the state budget. Details of our specific funding requests are included in my written testimony. Thank you.
Good morning. Hello, Chairman and Committee members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chrissy Barnard. I'm the Executive Director of NAMI Lake Superior South Shore, part of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. We provide support, education, public awareness, and advocacy for people living in Ashland, Bayfield, and Douglas Counties. This winter, I worked with my local elected officials to get 988 signs on the two bridges connecting Duluth and Superior after an acquaintance who struggled with his mental health and substance use died by suicide. Those signs not only bring public awareness of suicide and educate our community, but they're also a sign of hope for those that struggle like I once did myself. The Wisconsin 988 lifeline was started with COVID funding, which is no longer really available. But we ask that you please provide interim funding with the $12 million in GPR for sustained funding. This number is saving lives each and every day. We also ask that you adopt the $1.8 million from the governor's budget for peer-run respite centers. Peer-run respites are places where people can go to get free mental health and substance use services and supports from peer counselors who are in long-term recovery. Peer respites are evidence-based, and they reduce Medicaid expenses and hospitalizations. One study shows a 70% decrease in the need for expensive inpatient emergency services in the year following a stay at a peer-run respite. This saves not only taxpayer dollars, but also saves lives. Thank you for your time, and please support those who struggle with mental illness in the state. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Dr. Amy Starzicki, Superintendent for the Superior School District. For years, we've stretched resources, but underfunding is devastating Wisconsin schools and our children. Last year in Superior, we closed a school and eliminated over 60 staff positions directly impacting education quality. I am here to speak on behalf of our children and your constituents. The vast majority of Douglas County and Superior children attend public schools that are strongly supported by our community members. Last fall, our community approved an operational referendum. Over 85% of districts have sought community support just for basic needs. We urge legislators to increase aid, ending reliance on local referendums, which creates funding inequities and burdens to your constituents. Our students need to support this biennium. We are specifically asking for a significant increase in special education reimbursement, at least 60%. Last year, Superior transferred over $6 million from our general fund for unreimbursed costs, which has an impact on all of our children. Raise the low-revenue limit to help close the funding gap to ensure equitable resources for all children, no matter where they live, and an increase in the per pupil limit beyond the guaranteed $3.25 per year and $100 per year for per pupil aid. With proper funding, our students will have access to career and technical education programs like Spartan Manufacturing, developed with our local businesses, small class sizes, and intervention specialists for reading and math, ensuring college and career readiness. We understand the complexities of the legislative process. However, we implore you, please do not play politics with the children of Wisconsin. The partisan issues that exist between Republicans and Democrats must be addressed away from our public schools. We ask for fair, equitable investments in public education. Please listen to your constituents and invest in Wisconsin's future. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jerry Green. I'm a 100% disabled Vietnam veteran, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Veterans Housing Recovery Program. And I commend Governor Evers for putting a lot of money into the budget for this program. Currently, there's housing facilities in Chipwah, Green Bay, and Union Grove. Chipwah is about ready to be condemned. It's a terrible condition. We have plans. We work with the VA, Jim Bond and Joey Hoy, and Jennifer Fahy, the Director of this program. And I guess we're just asking for your support to push that budget forward. There's three veterans in the state of Wisconsin per week that commit suicide, 136 a year. And I've interviewed several of these individuals in Eau Claire that were on the verge of putting a gun in their mouth and ending their life, and they signed up for this program. They were educated. They were sent to work. They met people. They graduated. They're tax-paying community members. They're married. They have children. They own a home. The program is a fantastic program for veterans that are struggling. And I just encourage the budget to push, to keep this program in line. And what he put into the program budget is to update these facilities. So with that, I commend you guys for your services, and please push this forward. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Rocco Paulson, a sophomore student at Superior, one of the great schools in the UW system. Today, I will be representing my school as a student, athlete, and a believer that with your help, there are even greater things to come for institutions that have come to call home. With that being said, today, I'm highlighting why the UW is requesting $855 million over our next budget, a strategic investment to elevate Wisconsin from the near bottom in-state support public universities to the national medium. Right now, Wisconsin ranks 43rd out of 50 in the public higher education funding, while our neighboring states are in the top 10. This underfunding puts us at disadvantage in the war for talent to retain and attract new students, faculty, and future innovators, so we must invest now. This funding will directly support affordability, ensuring tuition remains stable, and the expanding Wisconsin tuition promise for low- and middle-income families, and making sure the possibility of raising our tuition doesn't fall upon me and my fellow students. It supports accessibility through direct admission, online courses, and adult education initiatives. It supports some talent development by improving graduation rates, expanding STEM fields and healthcare programs, and enhancing student support services like advising and mental health. We've already seen system-wide enrollment going up, graduation rates improving significantly, and nearly 90% of our in-state graduates staying in Wisconsin for five years later. But we can continue this momentum without stronger state backing. I'm happy to say UWS has a basketball court that I get to utilize, but the baseball and softball friends that have come here today wanted me to mention the upcoming projects regarding their campus life and experience at Superior. Quality facilities are essential in delivering a world-class education. One of those future projects in mind are baseball and softball fields that we can call our own rather than using other schools. This will also help us draw in new recruits who will eventually call UW as your own, just like I did. In short, this is an investment in Wisconsin's future, its students, workforce, and economy. Thank you. In short, this is an investment in Wisconsin's future, its students, workforce, and economy. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Kate McCrimmon and I'm here representing Wisconsin Early Childhood Action Needed or We Can. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the childcare workforce because providers can't just take a day off. In fact, many of you are here today because you are lucky to have an early educator who is there to care and educate your child from dawn until dark. Stand up if you've benefited from a childcare provider. Yet, the average wage is between $5 and $13 an hour and no benefits. I know this because I am a former family childcare provider who got into this profession because my husband and I could not afford childcare. I never earned more than $26,000 a year and I charged top rates. The cost of food, insurance, professional development, required fencing, and equipment are expensive and they keep on rising. This is because providers receive no state support besides being a public good. At 60 years old, there is no pension for me despite caring for my own and other people's children. I don't regret the decision to join this profession. For having chosen it, I simply care about others besides myself. COVID funds dedicated to childcare will end in June of 2025 unless you approve the $480 million budget ask for childcare tuition rates will, childcare tuition rates will go up by $25 to $40 per week. A new report shows a quarter of the workforce will leave the profession. What do you plan to say to angry parents who can no longer afford to pay for childcare and will have to make the excruciating decision to have one parent quit their job? What is your plan to replace the workforce? My ask is to invest in the 480 million so that Wisconsin childrens can thrive. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Matt Tenick. I'm the Director of the University of Wisconsin Superior's Lake Superior Research Institute. I'm a lifelong resident of Wisconsin and a proud graduate of the Universities of Wisconsin. My center has spent 55 years working closely with stakeholders in developing solutions using applied environmental research and non-regulatory strategies. Most importantly, through our projects and hands-on research, we prepare and train students for the workforce. Many of our students go on to graduate studies or career in other STEM or health fields because we teach them applied problem-solving and critical thinking skills. Universities of Wisconsin's campus not only serve as a home to train students, but also serve as leverage or match for extramural funds. For example, during a typical year, my center generates approximately $4 million in extramural funds. Recently, extramural funds have been as high as $8 million. Without my campus support, this level of extramural funds would not be possible. Please consider supporting the University of Wisconsin's budget request. The 855 million request over the biennium brings the University of Wisconsin out of the bottom 10 in public support and places it at the national medium. It will allow us to continue to conduct high-quality applied research and train students for the workforce. An investment in our public universities will allow us to continue to support industries with Great Lakes work and continue our goal to make the University of Wisconsin the pathway to future in water. Further, an investment will drive innovation and continue to create cutting-edge programs like the AI Network, the Dairy Innovation Hub, and the Freshwater Collaborative Wisconsin. I ask you to fully support the University of Wisconsin budget request. It'll pay future dividends throughout Wisconsin for workforce development and improve the lives of all Wisconsinites. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Gazelle and I am also here with Wisconsin Early Childhood Action Needed, the largest grassroots coalition of parents, providers, and concerned citizens banding together to ask for investment in our youngest learners. And I am an early childhood educator myself. I'm here to implore you, to basically beg and plead with you to enact a line item in our state budget for childcare, where one of the last states in the nation do not put a single dime of state funding into it and it's long past due for inclusion. Affordable, accessible, high-quality childcare and plentiful options available and for every family to choose from in every community, that in and of itself is a public good. Childcare is a public good and I think it's, you know, self-evident that that claim, the justification for that claim is largely self-evident, but I think it bears repeating. Parents need to be able to work. They obviously need to be able to support their families and when they are working jobs, they're obviously paying into our tax base. We want them to work. Employers need a workforce. They need to be able to employ those parents. And the children themselves, they deserve to be fully supported during their most vulnerable and most potent developmental and educational years. That time when the brain, 90% of the brain is developing, that's when we should put educational resources towards them. That way, they can develop into their fullest, highest potential and they can really make use of the later educational years, the K-12 system and beyond, that we are funding. The thing about public goods, though, is that they do require public funding in order to function. To illustrate, you know, the current situation, I've got a highly technical chart for you. Here is what it costs to deliver childcare. Here is if a parent can afford it at all, what they can afford to spend on it. And this tiny little part of my chart, that this razor-thin margin of profit, that's where our wages are. So that's why I'm making 12.50 an hour. That's why the average pay is so low. It's because we're subsidizing the middle class's ability to have childcare at all. It's overdue for you guys to put in your part. Please invest in childcare.
And I do apologize for butchering everybody's names. I really do apologize. So we have Ron Rada, UW La Crosse. Ashley Demuth, UW Stout. I can't get the first name, but GW Stout, last name's Anderson, I believe. Tammy Simon, UW Stout. Jeff Edie, E-I-D-E. Eau Claire City County Health Department, Giesi, I think it's Leski. Kyle Ludik, I think it's L-U-E-D-T-K, Frederick School District. Kaylee, L-U-E, I think it's T-K-E, Birchwood School District. Tim Sedell. Diane Tremblay, T-R-E-M-B-L, I think it's A-Y, Barron County Schools. Diane Wiesner, W-I-E-S-N-E-R, Circle of Hope. And Noah Rosenberg, UW Stout. And that was at 8:01.
All right. Hi, good morning. Co-chairs Born and Mark Klein, members of the Joint Committee on Finance. My name is Shawna Stowers. I am from Minong, Wisconsin, and I am the Ducks Unlimited Regional Director for Northwestern Wisconsin and Northeastern Minnesota. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before the committee today to voice my support for continuation of the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program. The Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program is a cornerstone of what it means to be a sportsman or woman in Wisconsin. Since 1989, it has provided millions of acres and access for hunters, anglers, trappers, and outdoor enthusiasts. With the program set to expire next year, now is the time to reflect on its accomplishments and why its renewal is not just important, but it's critical. For nearly a century, Ducks Unlimited has worked to preserve and protect wetlands from North America and in Wisconsin. That mission is made possible by the invaluable support of the Knowles Nelson Program from you all. These funds are vital not only for waterfowl and 900 other wildlife species, but flood control and outdoor recreation benefiting every Wisconsinite. By providing access, the program not only protects opportunities for hunters, anglers, and trappers, but also promotes outdoor recreation and tourism for visitors across the Midwest and beyond. This investment in public land supports local economies while ensuring Wisconsin's natural resources are enjoyed by future generations. Continued investment in this program strengthens our ability to conserve the lands and waters that make Wisconsin so special. As you consider this year's biennial budget, please keep in mind Wisconsin's natural heritage, outdoor traditions, and economy. The Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program is not only an investment, but it defines who Wisconsinites are and what Wisconsin is. Thank you for your consideration.
Good morning. My name is Greg Locke. I want to thank the members of the Joint Finance Committee for taking time to listen to me today. I am a first-generation graduate from the University of Wisconsin-Plattville in 1980. My professional career, I learned that if you don't embrace change, you'll quickly fall behind. And once you fall behind, it's very difficult to catch up. The division and location that I worked at fortunately to receive a disproportionate amount of capital for several reasons. One, we had a long-range strategic plan and we followed it and we updated it. Two, we had a track record of meeting and exceeding our expectations, both in capital and in our budgets. We continually benchmarked our cost, quality, and delivery to provide the best product to our customers requested. These are some of the same reasons that my wife Kathy and I feel our investment at UW-Plattville have a great return. Kathy and I have invested in UW- Wisconsin-Plattville because it continues to deliver to its students what I experienced as a student and the return on investment we see impacts not only the students, but also society. We currently have two student scholarships planned to support the upcoming major campaign and have planned a legacy gift in our estate. I am here today to ask you, as members of the Joint Finance Committee, to support UW-Plattville's request for capital funds to repurpose Carmen Library and to conduct an architectural feasibility study on Otten's Man Hall. The technology has drastically changed the way libraries operate. Repurposing the available space will create a comprehensive student success center located essential services most used by students. Otten's Man Hall, UWP has a proven track record. Renovating Otten's Man Hall will build the success in helping the state build Leaders of Tomorrow's workforce with an integrated project-based learning space as its core design. UW-Plattville continues to be good stewards of the state's resources. These projects will take 84,000 square feet of office space offline. Maintenance liability costs will be reduced, consolidating classroom space, offices, and laboratories. This administration has done their homework and has the support of Kathy and my wife. They have a plan. They have a great track record. They're dedicated to buying the rest results for students and the state of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity here. My name is Ron Rada. I'm here to ask for your support at Prairie Springs Science Center at the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. I've been a proud member of UWL for 50 years, having served as faculty member, as a director of its River Study Center, as a dean, and as a member of its foundation. When I arrived in 1975, UWL had an enrollment of about 7,000 and its science and healthcare programs were just beginning to emerge, including its River Study Center. So it's happened in 50 years. UWL has developed into a dynamic university of more than 10,000 students with high-performing programs in the STEM and healthcare areas. It consistently ranks as a top public university for academic quality and value. This has been recognized by business partners like QuickTrip, Mayo, Train Technologies, KF Brennan, and others. And these partners invest in UWL for curriculum, research, internships, and workforce development. Now, more than half the students at UWL are in the College of Science and Health and nearly 87% work for employers throughout Wisconsin, not just La Crosse. And the River Study Center has developed a national reputation and is highly engaged with the freshwater collaborative, aiming to produce the next generation of water science professionals. Past investments in UWL have yielded great returns. The university has always taken its role in workforce development very seriously and is ready to take the next steps in preparing students for the ever-changing landscape and workforce needs, gearing up for growth in emerging areas. Please support the Prairie Springs Science Center. It's a great investment for Wisconsin. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kim Pearson and I serve as the Hospital and Clinic Administrator for Essential Health for Northwest Wisconsin sites including Ashland, Spooner, Superior, and Raykheran Hayward. Essential Health is an integrated healthcare delivery system comprised of 14 hospitals, 80 clinics, and six nursing homes spread across the region that is 84% rural. I'm a registered nurse by background and have been a resident of northern Wisconsin my entire life and have served at Essential Health my entire career. My testimony today focuses on supporting higher education through training our next generation of healthcare. I would like to take time to first say that we have a great support with our UW Superior system. They are important community partners in the education of our future workforce. UW Superior has been a great partner consistently seeking and valuing our input on what educating the future means to healthcare. This partnership expands beyond medical and nursing, but also includes business, finance, and numerous other administrative and support roles that are vital to our organization. We are excited about UW Superior's plan to begin a Bachelor of Science in Nursing completion program this fall. Having this opportunity for our nurses to fulfill their dream of obtaining their BSN in their home community will lead to increasing our workforce pipeline by advancing their education. Workforce is very competitive and Essential Health invests in our staff by assisting with tuition costs. And we are confident that this new program, at a reputable and strong institution, will be successful. The greater the opportunities to support our workforce in the Northwoods, the better chance they will choose to live and work in our community. We appreciate the prior budget investments in the healthcare workforce and strongly support investing in higher education that will make a difference in the Twin Ports and northern Wisconsin. Funding of UW Superior will allow them to continue to be one of the most affordable institutions in our UW system, vital for our communities to sustain and grow.
Good morning. I'm Lisca Giesi. I am the Director of the Eau Claire City County Health Department. I'm also speaking on behalf of our State Association for Public Health. Thank you for coming to Northwest Wisconsin. I have had the privilege to work to improve the health of Wisconsin communities for more than 30 years in many, many different places, both urban and rural. There are lots of differences in our state, but one of the things that we share as a value is having healthy people. We need that for our community to thrive. You all value that as well. We can do better in Wisconsin and I'm here today to talk about that, to consider families, employees, students, and seniors. Local health departments are on the front lines of making sure that water and food are safe, that make sure our families don't have barriers to being healthy, and preventing negative outcomes from problematic health issues. For every $1 invested in public health and prevention, more than $4 is saved in long-term costs, cost to healthcare, law enforcement, schools, and many other places. In Wisconsin, we don't invest in prevention at a state level. Eau Claire gets $7,000 for public health. Imagine what counties that are significantly smaller get. We rely on local funding and local tax levy. A state investment in governmental public health is long overdue. Cost is too great to not prevent issues before they start. We're urging a real investment. The gap is big. $50 million annually would start at supporting prevention for all of our communities, building a stronger and healthier community that all of you can be proud of.
Hello, I'd like to thank the Joint Finance Committee for taking the time to be here today. My name is Jeff Idy. I'm the Executive Director for the Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance and we serve 185 school districts throughout Wisconsin. Previously, I served as a school superintendent. Because of that, I have a deep understanding of the budget challenges our schools face and how firsthand the importance of sharing services to be as efficient as possible. Earlier in my career, I learned a valuable lesson. If you emphasize it, it will improve and great things will happen. When our rural school district had the resources, we hired a full-time curriculum coordinator who could focus on K-12 writing and language arts. Our growth greatly improved and scores across the board improved. When we had the resources, over a five-year period, we set a goal to send our entire staff for professional development on professional learning communities. Our culture, learning, and student performance improved. As you are aware, limits, revenue limits were implemented in 1993 resulting from some fiscally responsible school districts receiving less financial support than their students than their neighboring districts. According to OASBOL, revenues per pupil have lagged inflation since 2009. Our National Rural Schools Association, Y Rural Matters 2023, 2023 report says Wisconsin provides less funding for rural school districts, ranked 11th lowest in the nation in terms of state revenue to schools per local dollar. You understand the significance of emphasizing something to improve it. Prove it. Act 20 stresses the importance of reading across the state. We need you more than ever. Supporting increase in special education funding to at least 60%, ensuring funding keeps up with inflation, preventing our schools from being penalized for being fiscally responsible in 1993, and reducing our current reliance on referendums to promote education since they've built in our state. to promote education since they've built in our state. We all know you have an extremely difficult job. Want to thank you for being here today and listening. Remember, if you emphasize it, it will improve.
Good morning. Thank you all for taking the time to be here today. My name is Dr. Gail Lippke and I'm the Superintendent for the Birchwood School District, a small rural district serving two hundred and twenty-two students from grades four K to twelfth grade. Despite our size, we provide a diverse range of learning opportunities for our students. Our district spans over two hundred square miles with a population density of twelve point nine people per square mile. Families choose Birchwood not just for geographic convenience, but because they value a safe environment, educational environment, strong family and community involvement, high academic expectations, and strong graduation standards. However, Birchwood faces a unique financial challenge. Due to our location, we have a large seasonal tourist population which drives up property values. This in turn classifies Birchwood as a zero-aided district in Wisconsin, meaning we receive almost no general state aid. For twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, our general state aid allocation was three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, and it will continue to decrease by fifteen percent annually until it reaches zero. This leaves us with one option, asking our income poor year-round residents to pass referendums just to keep the lights on. This is not a sustainable model for rural schools. We can better support rural students by adopting a more balanced and equitable school funding model that prioritizes their unique needs. Specifically, I urge you to increase categorical aids, raise special education and high-cost special education reimbursement to at least sixty percent sum sufficient, and expand high-cost transportation aid to reflect the realities of large, low-density districts like Birchwood. Additionally, Wisconsin's equalization aid formula needs to be reexamined. It does not account for student need, regional educational cost variations, or family income levels. In districts like Birchwood, local families are being penalized for high property values that they themselves cannot afford. Implementing a one thousand dollar general aid funding floor would help stabilize this. Thank you for your time today.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Lippke, the Superintendent at Frederick School District. Frederick is small, four hundred students. We're rural, northern Polk and southern Burnett Counties, but I'm not asking for money just for our district but for all districts. If you could see special education funding up to sixty percent, that would help all districts because every June, all public schools transfer money from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty-seven. So a measure in special education would help every student regardless of their zip code. Additionally, if you could work on a school funding system that would fairly help all schools in all parts of the state, we'd greatly appreciate it. I've lived in Door County, Grant County, Lafayette, Monroe, and I've seen the funding differences. I grew up in southeast Wisconsin, and your zip code matters when it comes to your education. And if you could balance that, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Diana Weiser. I'm a president of a nonprofit company. The name is Circle of Hope Incorporated. Our mission is to provide housing, care, and supervision to intellectually and physically disabled adults. The facilities that I have are state-licensed three-to-four-bed adult family homes. One is in Barron County and one is in Chippewa, excuse me, Chippewa County. I have a total of eight residents in those two locations, and I also have twenty staff members that I employ between the two locations. My concern is that with the talk of the reduction in Medicaid through the federal level, and that's where I'm going to make some points as far as where I think this is important for you guys at a state level to think about. The Medicaid payments that I get come through contracts with managed care organizations, IRIS, and an MAPC program. It makes up about ninety-nine percent of my operating budget, and eighty percent of that goes to payroll. The pay my staff receives pays income taxes to both state and federal. It helps me to retain qualified staff and support local economies when using money earned to purchase things. If my contracts are cut by a minimum of twenty percent, it will cause me to close those locations. Then where do these eight people go that are my residents? My residents, due to the severity of their disability, require twenty-four-hour awake care every day. They need assistance with many of daily living skills and personal hygiene that most people here today do automatically without even thinking how it would be to not physically or intellectually be able to perform independently. These services are an important part of giving these disabled residents a better quality of life and being able to live in the least restrictive environment. So please consider all of this when you guys are making your decisions when it comes down to Medicaid. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Tim Seidel. I'm the Assistant Conservationist for Sawyer County. Thank you for coming to Hayward and giving us in Northwest Wisconsin an opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to ask committee members to provide twenty point two million dollars in annual base funding to support county conservation in Wisconsin through the Department of Ag, Trade, and Consumer Protection Budget. Here in Sawyer County, natural resources are the foundation of everything we do. Forestry and tourism is the basis of our economy. People make this area their seasonal recreational destination because of our beautiful lakes and amazing natural beauty. The Sawyer County Zoning and Conservation Department focuses on helping individual landowners and the public whenever they have an erosion, invasive species, or water quality issue, and by assisting these landowners, we can continue to have the scenic destination for all to enjoy and our local communities can thrive. An example of how funding county conservation can help our area is when a landowner calls our office because their valuable lakeshore property is eroding into the lake and they don't know where to turn for help. We make a site visit, evaluate the situation, develop an engineered design to solve their problem, and sign a cost-share contract with help to offset costs. Landowner then hires a local contractor, who is a small business owner, to do the work, and the combination of that cost-sharing funding from the state and the landowner's portion doubles the financial effect of those funds. The contractor then uses that income to help pay employees. Those employees then use that income to shop at other local businesses, and those businesses are then able to use some of that income to help support their local Little League team. What started as a landowner making a phone call to their county conservation office turns into an investment in the community thanks to funding provided by the state. As you will hear from my counterparts later today, funding conservation not only benefits the county departments, it benefits the environment and all the local economies that depend on the environment to make a living. So I want to thank you for your time and consideration today and also for your support of county conservation in the past by annual budgets. I hope we can build on that support this budget and ask you to support twenty point two million in annual base funding for county land and water conservation departments. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're going to pause for a moment while we call up the next round of speakers. Kim Schrader, Sophia Moore, Jeremy Oswald, Chase Cumming, and also Mike Neer, K-N-E-R, I believe, Kathy Mullally, M-U-L-L, I think it's A-L-L-Y, Denise Meyer, Charlie Glazeman, Ashley Lane, Katie Harder, Stuart Mathas, I think it's M-A-T-T-H-A-S, Jessica Bryan, Kelly Peterson, and Kelly registered at eight oh five.
Okay. Good morning, distinguished members of our Joint Finance Committee. Thank you for the opportunity today to talk with all of you. I make a point every year to get to the Capitol and visit every one of your offices, so I appreciate you heading this way for this one. Thank you. My name is Diane Tremblay, and I'm honored to serve as a Superintendent of our Barron Area Schools. I have the distinct privilege of representing the dedicated schools of Barron County, including Shitek, Cumberland, Rice Lake, Prairie Farm, Turtle Lake, along with our schools in Barron, Elmina, and Ridgeland. I'm joined with two exceptional colleagues behind me. Andrew Stallone, our district CPA, whose expertise guides us in all of our finances and business operations, and Megan Danielson, our Dean of Students, whose unwavering commitment keeps our students on the path to success behaviorally and academically. Together, we stand united in our mission to provide every student with an extraordinary education, one that empowers them to be meaningful, have meaningful lives, pursue their passions, and become inspiring leaders in our communities and beyond. We recognize the significant responsibility you carry in weighing priorities and stewarding resources for all Wisconsinites. The complexity of your work does not go unnoticed, and we're deeply grateful for that. So today, we respectfully ask for your support on two critical measures, both of which are essential to the continued success of our schools, our students, and our constituencies.
First, we respect that you strongly consider increasing the revenue limit authority to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index, CPI. As costs continue to rise in transportation, facilities, equipment, food service, and health insurance premiums, school districts must have the ability to adjust accordingly in order to maintain essential services and be competitive in the workforce to recruit and retain quality teachers. Second, we urge you to increase the special education reimbursement rate to up to sixty percent and to structure the appropriation as sum sufficient. This is not simply a special education topic. It has impacts on the entirety of a school system and is a necessary investment for districts to adhere to educational mandates. The current funding model places unsustainable pressure on school districts, requiring us to absorb significant costs for these specialized services. These services are extremely difficult to acquire in rural Wisconsin, so much of the time we are contracting out at higher costs. The Barron Area School District, for example, the cost to provide our special education program is over three point five million dollars and is only offset by one point two million dollars of state categorical special education aid and federal grants. This dynamic leaves us needing to transfer the residual two point three million dollars from our general operations. In Barron, our general fund budget is nineteen point five million dollars, meaning that almost twelve percent of our general fund budget goes to subsidize our special education program. The cost of our special education program has increased thirty-eight percent over the last five years. This dynamic of financial burden is not only shared on behalf of all of our Barron County schools, but the majority of schools in Wisconsin. To meet the obligation of internally subsidizing the special education program, our budget dollars are diverted from vital, non-mandated programs. This dynamic is forcing cuts and downsizing in programs like tech ed, which fosters workforce readiness through the trades trainings, apprenticeships and certifications, as well as music, art, agriculture, business ed, family and consumer sciences, competitive athletic programs enforcing larger class sizes. These offerings are not luxuries. They're key components of a comprehensive education that engages students and builds skills our communities need. The ongoing reliance on operational referendums to bridge these financial gaps is not a sustainable solution and creates winners and losers across our state.
Without the support for these two critical measures, districts are compelled to make continual budget reductions, which directly compromise our ability to provide a high-quality education. Aligning the revenue limit with inflation and ensuring adequate reimbursement for mandated special education services are essential to preserving the quality of programs and services offered to our students. Education is the cornerstone of a prosperous future, so when we invest in our schools, we invest in the potential of every child, the strength of our communities, and the future of our state. Our kids need us to provide them an opportunity to thrive, to pursue their passions, reach their potential, and contribute meaningfully to the world around them. Thank you again for your time, for your service to Wisconsin, and for your commitment to building a better future for the children we are honored to serve.
Hi. My name is Kim Schrader. I am a fourth-grade teacher, serving as the Vice President of WIEC, the State Teachers' Union, representing members in all seventy-two counties in the state. I'm here to support Governor Evers' proposed education budget. In fact, I've supported his proposed education budgets and have spoken to this committee for over the last eight years. And it's not just me who's spoken. Parents, educators, community members, administrators, superintendents, students have all come out to say our public schools need higher funding and need more resources to help our students and need highly-trained and quality professionals in our schools. And not once did you listen. So I'm not really sure exactly what to talk about. We used facts, we used common sense, and it didn't do any good. And this year, it so far doesn't appear, and I hope I'm wrong, but it doesn't appear that it'll be different. Even though the vast majority of people in the state say they want more money to go to public schools, that we need more money to go to public schools, the majority party's response to the governor's proposed budget is that it's dead on arrival. In fact, some of you on the committee have said this. So much for listening to your constituents. Instead, with the state having billions in surplus, you're focused on tax cuts for the wealthy. You want to take the hard-earned money that working people have paid in taxes, not listening to them as to what they want done with it, and give their money back to the rich. Here's the thing, they don't need it. They're already rich. For once, just once, it would be great if you actually did your job and listened to the constituents who voted for you and not your large donors. Our students deserve it, our educators deserve it, and our democracy deserves it. I hope your actions in this budget show that you do in fact support children. Otherwise, please, please pass this budget. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Mullally. I'm the Executive Director at Northwest Connection Family Resources, or NCFR as known locally. Our agency serves fourteen counties and seven tribal communities with childcare resource and referral services, as well as serving Sawyer County, Washburn County, and the LCO Tribal Community with Family Resource Center programming. I'm here today because investing in early childcare is critical to children's development, our child's success around the state, and as well as the economy. I know that you all care about children. I've had many conversations with many of you about the childcare crisis and the need for additional family support programming. What you might not know is that I'm also a proud Hayward High School graduate. Call out to Hayward. And I've learned many lessons in this building and actually in this very room. One of them is being a team player. NCFR is one of nine childcare resource and referral agencies powered by Thriving Wisconsin. Childcare resource and referral agencies are federally mandated infrastructure that provide early childcare services throughout Wisconsin for over the last forty years. CCRNRs support parents with enhanced childcare referrals by calling childcare providers based on each family's unique needs to help them locate childcare so parents can work. CCRNRs provide training and coaching to retain and support regulated childcare providers. We conduct outreach to improve access to childcare through certification and pre-licensing services. To support this work and expand efforts, we recommend that Wisconsin invest in bolstering the existing childcare resource and referral infrastructure by two million dollars. This will support the workforce, enhance childcare providers' experiences that they get through their local trusted CCRNR partners. Today, I ask you to consider many childcare solutions that can support children, connect families, and strengthen our communities by investing in early care and education through local childcare resource referral agencies, supporting childcare providers directly, and family resource centers. Thank you in advance for helping Wisconsin thrive.
Hello. My name is Jeremy Oswald, and I am here to advocate for community health centers throughout Wisconsin, which provide quality healthcare to all people across the state. I work at North Lakes Community Clinic, which is one of seventeen different community health centers that provide healthcare in every corner of Wisconsin. One of North Lakes' twenty locations is right here in Hayward. At that clinic, we provide medical, dental, behavioral health, chiropractic, addiction recovery, prescription services, and psychiatry services. We have clinics in large and small towns and work to fill healthcare gaps where they exist here in the very northern part of the state. Not only do we provide care for people that live here year-round, but for visitors and those who choose to live part-time in our beautiful area. Here in Hayward and other lake-adjacent clinics, North Lakes sees people who may decide the best way to catch a fish is to test the hook on themselves first before going after a smallmouth bass or northern. Better safe than sorry. Each community health center offers a sliding fee scale for those who qualify and accept Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance. It is hard to recruit for these professionals that offer the special care we pride ourselves in providing mainly because of our remote rural locations. When there's an announcement that a dentist has been decided to join our team, there's a cheer that goes through the email chain. One tool that is helpful in recruiting dentists and family doctors is the state loan forgiveness program that you have funded in the past. This program currently does not include behavioral health therapists. My ask of you is today is to include behavioral health therapists in this program to help attract these professionals to our area. At our Iron River Clinic, which is about an hour north of here, we recently filled one of these positions that had been open for fourteen hundred days. That's over three years for you that are doing the math. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Katie Harder.
Hello. My name is Katie Harder. I'm the family support coordinator at Northwest Connection Family Resources located in Hayward. Family Resource Centers are community-based hubs that offer a variety of programs, services, and resources to support families. They aim to strengthen families, promote child well-being, and prevent child abuse and neglect by providing education, referrals, and access to concrete support free to families. We've heard it asked, why don't more families come to testify at joint finance? Well, we wish they could. They wish they could. But we all know small children in a location like this, for what could be ours, would be challenging. So today, I'm going to share the words of a parent, Heather Bratz, that were written specifically for you. Even though I cannot be there today in person, I want to take this opportunity to share the impact that Northwest Connection Family Resources has made in our family's life. I can remember the day I walked in the door at NCFR, newly postpartum, with my son in the car seat as I carried it in, filled with desperate hope. At the time, I didn't even know what I was hoping for. As new parents, we hadn't even held a baby before our own. Our son was born with a genetic condition, and the weight of what lie ahead of us was beginning to set in. Our assigned home visitor took us out into the sunroom to do a quick interview. I felt heard and understood, and I remember the tears flowing as I shared the story of our family and the struggles we were facing. Relationship problems, doctor's appointments, postpartum depression, extreme sleep deprivation, and a lack of a supportive village. That's what NCFR has been to us, a village at every stage, always there to turn with questions or needs. They have reminded us how far we have come as parents and individuals, keeping us pointed in the right direction. I'm forever grateful for the support we receive and for the things my son and daughter have picked up from consistent visits we've received through the home visitation program. I wish every family would take the opportunity to allow NCFR to their lives, and I hope they will be around when my children need a village of their own. This is just one of the many positive experiences shared by a parent who has entered the doors of a family resource center.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Chase Cummings, and I serve as the county conservations with the Dunn County Land and Water Conservation Division. Joining me is Mike Kinnear, a member of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors and the County's Land Conservation Committee. We are here today to request that the committee provide twenty point two million dollars in annual base funding to support county conservation offices across Wisconsin through the DAC cap budget. The Dunn County Board of Supervisors recently adopted a resolution in support of this important request. In Dunn County, our land and water conservation staff work primarily with the agricultural community. We build strong relationships with farmers through the implementation of the farmland preservation program, coordination with two producer-led watershed groups, and providing technical and financial assistance to implement state agricultural performance standards and conservation practices that reduce soil erosion and protect our shared water resources. We also strive to be creative and strategic in leveraging the funding we receive. DAC cap staffing and cost-share dollars often allow us to secure additional state, federal, and private funding sources. By bringing these resources into our community, we're able to complete projects that not only benefit individual landowners, but also have a lasting positive impact on our local environment and economy.
As Chase says, my name is Mike Kinnear, and I'm here to fully support the proposal he's making today. In my experience on the county board these last nine years, it's shown me that the success of conservation efforts depend first and foremost on the relationships built with the farmers. Adequate staffing ensures we have the time and expertise needed to earn trust, collaborate effectively, and deliver results. Please consider supporting this request.
We appreciate your past support of county conservation departments through previous biennial budgets. Today, we urge you to build on that commitment by providing twenty point two million dollars in annual base funding to ensure strong, consistent support for county conservation staff across Wisconsin. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Mathias. I'm the fire chief of the Ashland Fire Department, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Association and our member fire chiefs from around the state. The Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Association is requesting the Joint Finance Committee version of the biennial budget, include the necessary resources to maintain both Wisconsin Task Force One and Wisconsin State Hazmat Team. The funding request includes two point five million dollars each year of the biennium, totaling five million dollars for the state hazmat team, as well as three million dollars in year one of the biennium, and one point five million dollars in year two of the biennium, totaling four point five million dollars for Wisconsin Task Force One.
Hi, I'm Mark Rennerman, chief of Altoona Fire and Rescue, also representing Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs. First, our request is based on two factors. Those factors, first factor is increased team management and activation, or team engagement and activation in two thousand twenty-four. Wisconsin Task Force One was mobilized to conduct swift water rescue missions in North Carolina following Hurricane Helene, as well as a one-week deployment and staging at the Republican National Convention in Milwaukee. Hazmat was mobilized and dispatched to Milwaukee to address any hazardous material incidents before and throughout the Republican National Convention, as well as regional responses around the state. Second item, the increased inflationary pressures for materials and supplies. Hazmat funding has not changed since two thousand thirteen. These factors have occurred over the past decade, resulting in both units in critical need for state-supported resources. As frontline emergency teams with sub-teams and personnel across the state committed to their service and duty and responding at the most critical time, it is necessary to fund the teams adequately to ensure they are trained, prepared, and equipped with the required tools to protect our communities. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlie Glazier. I'm the treasurer and past president of the Development Association, and I'm currently a county board supervisor for District Seven. My colleagues and I are here today to update the committee on the largest bridge infrastructure project ever seen in the state of Wisconsin that will begin in fiscal year twenty-seven. In less than two years, an economic lifeline for the state and for our northern region will shut down and not reopen until twenty thirty-two. The Blotnick Bridge closure is not just a northern Wisconsin concern. It's a state and regional priority with national implications. The bridge is just not a connection. It's an economic lifeline, especially for our great state of Wisconsin. The bridge carries some thirty-three thousand vehicles daily, including more than two hundred and sixty-five thousand trucks per year, transporting goods worth nearly four billion dollars annually. And these shipments support sectors that are core to Wisconsin's economy, including agriculture, energy, timber, and manufacturing. Unfortunately, this vital asset is in declining condition, and Minnesota Department of Transportation ranks as the number-one risk for service interruption among all the statewide bridges. It is the same structure of the bridge that collapsed, actually, in Minneapolis. The five-year bridge closure will be the longest for our state, possibly the nation, and it's unprecedented. With this, our business and business community are downright terrified of this closure. And as a local business owner will explain, terrified not being able to survive, let alone thrive through not just one year, but year two, and year three, and year four, and year five. Sarah?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Mayne. I'm the owner of Tiny Riot Boutique. Tiny Riot Boutique and businesses like it are the lifeblood of our community. We are an area that, having lost many of our big-box stores, we depend on our small businesses to meet the needs and the economic stability of our city. My business in particular is known for attracting customers from as far as five hours away, with most coming from Minnesota and over the bridge. My boutique offers specialty apparel that rivals those of big-city stores. I'm proud to be able to provide that in my community. We are currently facing many challenges that threaten the sustainability of our businesses. Recently, I have had to address rising costs due to tariffs, and most businesses are in the same boat as me. And though we are an adaptive area, and we are no strangers to finding ways to make things work, unfortunately, the loss of our main traffic pipeline is not something our small businesses can endure without help. I speak not only on behalf of myself, but also on behalf of the lifelong residents who have now become entrepreneurs and who are committed in investing and rebuilding and filling our storefronts, and the small businesses of Superior that are working on building this thriving community. Please, we need your help.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Caesar, and I'm the executive director of the Development Association of Superior in Douglas County. I'm here on behalf of our one hundred and fifty business members as we grow a regional coalition preparing for the long-term closure of the Blotnick Bridge. This is a once-in-a-generation infrastructure disruption, and we need a response that meets the scale of its impact. We have been encouraged to request a one-time funding that will help businesses not only survive, but thrive through the bridge closure. This funding would provide temporary relief in the form of forgivable loans, grants, technical assistance for business owners, and capital support to ensure that the very businesses that depend on the bridge survive to benefit from its replacement. With a one-time funding of forty-eight million dollars from this current budget surplus, we will launch a business support program that will provide direct support to business owners and operators directly impacted by the closure. These funds will support workforce retention, operational continuity, and necessary adaptation, whether that's expanding delivery logistics, launching e-commerce, or simply making payroll through a challenging quarter. This isn't a speculative idea. It builds on what we already know. During COVID, Douglas County businesses received over eighty million dollars through the paycheck prevention program, protection program, in just eighteen months, and that invested, kept doors open. Our proactive proposal will be used over eight years, targeted specifically to businesses navigating the long-term ripple effect of the bridge closure. Forgivable grants, business planning, transportation support, and programs to encourage consumer spending in Wisconsin downtowns are all part of what we can and will work with your support. This investment will help ensure our region does not survive the closure, but adapt, compete, grow, and thrive. Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming up north and being here with us today. My name is Janice Meyer. I'm a lifelong resident and a graduate of the Universities of Wisconsin, and today I am here on behalf as a business champion with the Development Association. We were advocating for this one-time funding request of forty-eight million dollars from the current surplus, an investment not in infrastructure, but in our people, specifically in the small business owners, the entrepreneurs who form the backbone of our regional economy. The bridge closure will impact far more than traffic patterns. It will change how customers reach businesses, how goods are delivered, and how services are accessed. That kind of disruption requires not just financial support, but strategic preparation, which is what we're here to do today. Part of this one-time investment will launch and sustain a business education and technical assistant program. The program will provide targeted training, workshops, and one-on-one advising for businesses, helping them prepare in advance, adapt during the closure, and innovate for long-term growth. Think of a family-owned restaurant that suddenly loses lunchtime traffic because commuters are rerouted. This program would help them to pivot to online ordering, build a delivery plan, and market to new customers. Or a manufacturer needing help reworking supply chains will connect them with logistics experts to build small, resilient strategies. This isn't a theory, it's action, grounded in what our region's businesses are asking for right now, real-world, practical support delivered locally by people who understand the landscape. This is a modest investment with big returns. For less than three percent of the overall bridge rebuild, we can equip hundreds of businesses and business owners in northern Wisconsin to navigate a multi-year disruption and come out stronger together on the other side. Thank you.
Sarah Mayne, M-A-Y-N-E. Jim Caesar. Kelly Martin. Ryan, I think it's R-E-I, I think it's C-L. Leslie Larson. Michelle, last name is, I believe it's S-A-D-A, I think it's U-S-K-A-S. Oneida County Land and Water Conservation. Brooks Gailman. Kyle Cronin. Rebecca Fleming. George Zaskie, Z-A-S-K-E. Linda Hand. And Anne Wolan, W-O-L-L-A-N. And that was at eight sixteen.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Peterson. I serve on the Douglas County Board of Supervisors. I'm a UWS alum, my graduate and undergrad, and I serve on the executive committee for the Development Association, and my role here today is I'm the executive director of the Superior Business Improvement District. I'm here on behalf of our over three hundred stakeholders in my district, that's our property owners and our businesses, for the final piece of our proposal. And we are here to shift the consumer behavior, provide meaningful transportation alternatives during the Blotnick Bridge closure, so that we not only survive, but we thrive through this whole endeavor. Every weekend, over four thousand Wisconsin residents cross the bridge to shop, dine, and seek entertainment in Minnesota. That closure will increase travel times, and we have an opportunity here to encourage more people to spend their dollars right here at home in Wisconsin. Part of our forty-eight million dollar request will support targeted marketing campaigns and transportation programming to drive, pardon me, to drive consumer spending into Wisconsin throughout the four to five years of the closure. Our plan includes a coordinated Shop Small Every Saturday campaign reminding residents their purchasing power in our local economy. We will highlight many small businesses, build regional reasons to stay in our community. We're looking at a weekend trolley-wide system to support the transportation system already in Wisconsin and Minnesota, so that there are less traffic on the bridge to help them going in through our progress zones. We want them to come and stay and play and watch the building of the bridge. With our partnership, we can provide this multi-year effort to shift habits and celebrate our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. We're from Endeavors Adult Development Center in Balsam Lake, Polk County, Wisconsin. We're here to talk about possible Medicaid cuts and what that would do to our center. Our center has been established since nineteen sixty-five. This year is our sixtieth year of providing respite services to Polk County and the surrounding areas, and they're extremely vital services. We have a transportation department that we transport fifty-one participants into the center five days a week for the services, and we have about sixty medical, non-medical emergency transports that we do every week also for people that are unable to drive back and forth from appointments and things like that. We're very essential, and if anything would happen to any part of the Medicaid program, we would probably end up closing our doors. And we have fifty-five participants that come there every single day, excited to get off that bus, excited to be part of what we do, and it would just be devastating. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Bryan, and I'm the victim witness manager with Eau Claire County. I also have the privilege of serving as the president of the Wisconsin Victim Witness Professionals. Today, I'm joined by some of my dedicated colleagues from Barron and Chippewa counties, and we are here to ask for your support of the Department of Justice and Criminal Justice Coalition's budget proposal, specifically the funding request for county victim witness programs. Our primary goal with this proposal is simple, to increase the reimbursement rate for county programs so that we can continue to provide the constitutionally required services to victims of crime across Wisconsin. Currently, we are constantly challenged to do more with less, stretching resources, cutting costs, and trying to meet high standards with limited means. It's incredibly difficult to focus on delivering the compassionate, comprehensive support victims services deserve when we're also worrying about how to keep the lights on and staff in place. This funding request is not about growing our programs or adding positions. It's about preserving what we have, maintaining the critical services that are already in place, and ensuring we don't fall below the standards victims have come to rely on. Over the past decade, reimbursement rates have fluctuated Over the past decade, reimbursement rates have fluctuated between forty and fifty-six percent. Yet, under statute, the state may reimburse up to ninety percent of the cost of operating victim witness programs. We're asking for a sum-sufficient continuing appropriation to meet a sixty percent reimbursement rate, a modest, sustainable step towards stability. On behalf of all of our counties, our staff, and most importantly, the victims we serve, I thank you for your time, your consideration, and your commitment to justice. Please don't hesitate to reach out to anyone at Wisconsin Victim Witness Professionals with questions or for further discussion. We welcome the opportunity to continue this important conversation. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Martin. I am a Behavioral Health Care Coordinator at North Lakes Community Clinic in Hayward. We are a community health center with twenty service sites across the northern half of the state. As the Behavioral Health Care Coordinator, I am the first person a person meets with after they've made the brave decision to reach out for help. My job is to connect them to whatever services they need, whether that be addiction recovery, mental health services, primary medical care, dental care, chiropractic, and/or community health worker and peer support services. I also connect them to any services they may need anywhere else in the community, and at times, I even have to refer people to other parts of the state, just due to a lack of resources at times. But one of the biggest barriers I see are related to having a lack of access to behavioral health counselors due to staff shortages in our area and the fact that our current mental health counselors often are completely booked and cannot ethically take on more clients. The Wisconsin Office of Rural Health currently will help us with retention and recruitment activities, one of which offers up to fifty thousand dollars in student loan assistance for behavioral health providers. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, up to fifty thousand dollars in student loan assistance to medical and dental providers. This does not include behavioral health providers. This is the ask here, is that we extend that to our behavioral health providers. Also regarding the psychotherapy carve-out policy, this is a policy that states that any of those who enroll in CCS programs cannot, no longer, our community health center can no longer bill for those services for behavioral health, which results in them having a disruption in services. If you look at the research, it shows that the most important aspect of someone getting better is the connection with their therapist, even more important than the treatment modalities that they use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Markline, Representative Born, and committee members for your time. My name is Michelle Seduskas, and I'm the County Conservationist for the United County Land and Water Conservation Department. I am here today to ask you to support increasing county conservation staff-based funding for twenty point two million. Citizens may think to call the DNR first about conservation issues, but it's remarkable the questions that our department has helped answer. What kind of wasps are eating my house? I just bought a piece of land. What will my address be? How do I stop the riverbank from eroding away and threatening my house? And how do I remove moss on a shingle roof so that I don't contaminate my well or lake? I quickly reached out to our county conservationist, Liz, for help on that one. Within hours, I was contacting the homeowner with a list of recommendations. This is the county network that is readily available to help solve natural resource issues. We are local leaders that work side by side with lake associations, invasive species groups, nonprofit organizations, the DNR, and other governmental bodies. We can quickly get boots on the ground, have strong local relationships, and can easily tap into our diverse regional support system when needed. When I joined the department thirteen years ago, continuity and trust were in short demand, or short supply. My team and I have worked hard to build trust, integrity, and stability through the years. We've increased our partnership with towns, helping them replace failing culverts. We are working with the city of Rylander to plant more urban trees, and we are providing our technical skills and equipment to help Lincoln County assess their stream crossings. Projects such as these take time, skill, and demand trust. They do not happen overnight. With federal funding in jeopardy, the time is now to support county land and water departments through continued base funding. Please consider supporting Wisconsin farmers and landowners, the environment, and our economy by allocating twenty point two million in base funding for county land and water departments. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Reed. I'm the Regional Attorney Manager for the Superior Region of the Wisconsin State Public Defender's Office. I'm here to ask you to consider increasing private bar rates for serious felonies. In our community that we represent, we represent your neighbors, associates, summer softball league members, people that work in local businesses, the local Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. These people we represent when they're charged with crimes or delinquent acts. Why we can't represent certain people, co-defendants, or people that commit crimes together, or prior relationships with other witnesses, or current relationships with possible witnesses? When we can't find, when we can't represent someone in-house, we have to work with, collaborate, and work with our private bar partners. It's important to make sure that these private bar attorneys stay taking our cases, especially for serious felonies, sexual assaults, and property crimes. These private bar attorneys do not work as public defenders. As a staff manager, I am one of the people making the phone calls to family members, people incarcerated, courts, explaining why we can't take cases and what we're doing to work with private bar partners to take these cases. This affects the court system, this affects victims, and it affects access to justice, and this is important to all of us in all communities. Timely appointment of counsel is better for our clients, it's better for victims, it's better for the system in general, and it's better for everybody. Specifically, our clients, it's better to help find witnesses, get experts, collaborate with other colleagues, and better lower client relationships with our clients. In conclusion, we support higher rates for private bar attorneys taking serious felonies, and we ask you to consider this. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Miles. I'm the President of the Pope Burnett Chapter of Wisconsin Farmers Union, and I'm here to speak for our membership and stakeholders benefiting from the work that we do. Our chapter became invigorated back in twenty nineteen when a thirty-six-thousand hog farrowing operation tried to muscle their way into Burnett County. We were able to stop them, and as farmers, we were more interested in what we wanted agriculture to be, so we started the San Croix Valley Food Alliance, a vision of what locally based food production could look like. Several of our union members, including myself, are participants in the Local Food Purchase Assistance Program, known as the LFPA. LFPA had its origins during COVID, when food supply chains were breaking down and the USDA began looking at local farmers to fill the gaps. Farmers were raising food that was sold wholesale into food shelves and pantries, benefiting both farmers and people facing food insecurity. We did such a good job that the program has extended into twenty twenty-five until the algorithms canceled it because key words were flagging us. Seems like diverse farmers doing climate-smart agriculture to feed poor people was too full of waste, fraud, and abuse. It is for these reasons that the Wisconsin Farmers Union, the Wisconsin Food Hub Cooperative, DATCAP, and Governor Evers are asking you to fund the full amount that we would have gotten from USDA for Wisconsin for LFPA in the state budget. This is a win-win-win situation for farmers, for eaters, and for the environment. I sell and I raise and sell pastured beef. My practices in agroecology have improved my production so much that I'm beginning to survive drought and protect surface water for farmers and residents who live downstream from me. With sunshine, rain, and a little groundwater, I can produce the healthiest plant-based protein that there is for people who would never be able to afford it. We are convinced that this is the real future of agriculture in the U.S. and around the globe. Cheeseheads shouldn't have to live in food deserts while purchasing food-like substances from Frankenfood globalists who extract our wealth to urban financial districts. We can feed ourselves real, healthy food and live in joy and abundance while doing it. Help us build this vision. This is not a partisan issue. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Members of the Joint Finance Committee, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kyle Cronin, District Administrator of the seven-hundred-and-forty-square-mile Schuammigan School District, where eagles soar. And with me today is Victor Ambrose, our School Board President. We face serious financial challenges in providing a quality education, and today I want to focus on the urgent need for increased state funding for special education. In Schuammigan, our special education costs far outpace the state support we receive. This year, we were forced to transfer a staggering one point one seven million dollars from our general fund just to cover these mandated costs. Let me emphasize the impact. This diverts the entire funding allocated for ninety-six students out of general education programming entirely to special education needs. These crucial dollars are intended for core instruction and essential resources for all of our students and are instead consumed by these unfunded mandates. Recent increases in state aid have simply not kept pace with the growing needs and rising costs. To illustrate the positive impact for increased state support, raising the reimbursement rate to just sixty percent would provide our district with an additional five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This would free up critical general fund dollars, allowing us to reinvest in the education of all of our students. Increasing the state reimbursement aid for special education to a meaningful level such as sixty percent is about ensuring that our students, regardless of their specific needs or where they live, have access to the support they require. Furthermore, we encourage you to consider a sum-sufficient funding model for special education. This would provide the necessary flexibility for districts like ours to respond effectively to the often unpredictable demands of special education without constantly worrying about exceeding cap allocations and further draining our general funds. Underfunding special education directly harms the educational opportunity of all of our students.
Hello. My name is Annie Wallen. I'm the Deputy Director of Day Treatment and Clinical Services for Northwest Wisconsin and Guidance Clinic. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I'm here to ask for a twenty-five percent rate increase for Wisconsin Day Treatment. Day Treatment is a community-based organization that provides intensive services to children and adolescents with serious emotional and behavioral difficulties. These children cannot be maintained in a school setting and need additional support to help them develop the skills needed to get back to school. Our goal is to stabilize youth, strengthen families, and reduce the need for out-of-home placements and higher levels of care. In twenty twenty-four, we serve fifty-eight out of the seventy-two counties in Wisconsin. The vast majority of these counties are rural and underserved. We serve nine hundred and sixty-four children. Only six percent of these children required a higher level of care after day treatment. The current annual cost per child for day treatment services is thirty-eight thousand. Group home is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand per year, and residential treatment is about two hundred and sixty-six thousand per year. Inpatient psychiatric care is nine hundred and fifty thousand per year, and again, day treatment is thirty-eight thousand per year. As you can see, day treatment is a highly cost-effective service compared to other more intensive services. So why are we asking for a twenty-five percent rate increase? Our current rate is outdated. Our last rate increase was in twenty twenty-two, and before that, it was in twenty twelve. Despite rising costs and inflation, funding has not kept pace, creating financial challenges for us. A twenty-five percent increase will sustain and expand access, allow us to serve additional clients, improve staffing and therapy options, improve long-term outcomes, and save public funds through early intervention. Support a twenty-five percent increase for Wisconsin Day Treatment. This investment will save the state millions while improving lives and strengthening our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pause for a moment so we can call up some more folks.
John Groh, G-R-O-H. Nick Kaiser, K-A-I-S-E-R. Kathy Lois Hutton, Sierra Club. Stephen Smith. Barbara Sorenson. I believe it's David Richard. Joe Tribby, T-R-I-B-B-E-Y. Bob Zimmerman. Joe Weiss, W-E-I-S-S. This is like a group from the Spooner School District. Bonnie Reitz, R-E, I'm sorry, R-I-E-T-Z, State Public Defender. Don Posh, P-O-S-H. And Amy Workman. And Amy was at eight thirty-one.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, members of the committee. My name is Becca Fleming. I am a psychiatric nurse practitioner. One of the roles I work at is with telepsychiatry, managing medications and providing counseling for UW college students. I am advocating in favor for the funding of mental health services for UW college students. As many of you know, the mental health crisis facing our youth is growing. Among Wisconsin's college students, it has reached alarming levels. Unfortunately, suicide is now the second-leading cause of death for this age group. In twenty twenty-four, UW River Falls had four students die by suicide in just three months. A recent report highlighted that seventy percent of students have had mental health struggles since starting college, and only thirty-seven percent reached out for campus supports. Research shows that mental health issues and emotional stress are currently the top reasons that students drop out. These challenges are not only jeopardizing the well-being of our students, but also are impacting their academic performance and retention, which then poses significant concerns for our educational institutions and the future of Wisconsin's workforce. As a psych provider with Mantra Health, I have the unique opportunity to provide mental health care to college students. I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact that accessible mental health care has on academic success. Our platform collaborates closely with campuses by reducing barriers for students to offer help that extends beyond the traditional hours. We meet students where they are so they are able to balance school, jobs, and other life responsibilities to be able to receive the mental health support that they need. We also provide a twenty-four-seven crisis line. The governor's budget recognized the gravity of Wisconsin's mental health crisis, including an eleven-million-dollar annual investment to enhance mental health access on college campuses. This funding is meant to not only improve access, but to also improve outcomes by enabling students' retention and success academically. The allocation aims to supplement vital on-the-ground programs, including the hiring of additional staff and expanding outreach initiatives. Furthermore, this funding aids to support continued partnerships with organizations like Mantra Health, ensuring that students can connect with the care they need without navigating an often overwhelming mental health system with long wait times. Supporting this budget request is more than a financial decision, it's a commitment to the well-being, resilience, and future of Wisconsin students. Thank you all.
Hi. Thank you. To all legislative members here today, thank you for scheduling this meeting and attending today's hearing. I also want to thank Senators Staffield, Representative Cryback, and Governor Evers. They represent my school district. My name is John Groh. I serve as Superintendent for the Student, Staff, and Community of the Spring Valley School District. It's a wonderful public K-12 school district located in Pierce County, St. Croix County, and Dunn Counties. I have two messages for all of you today. The first is to thank you. The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-five BNEIL budget raised the low revenue limit by one thousand dollars per pupil. This vital increase was years in the making. The investment was directly responsible for eliminating the need to go back to our taxpayers and ask them for an operating referendum. It was unexpected and left us relieved and with hope for the future. My second point is to encourage the legislature and governor to keep up the momentum. Please increase the special education funding and reimbursement to a sum-sufficient level of sixty percent. Besides sending a strong message that special education needs are a priority, it would free up critical dollars for the many K-12 public needs and challenges the state is counting on us to address. If we receive those funds, the first things, the goals I will do, the things that you guys can make happen in Spring Valley, we're going to bring back a family consumer science program. Haven't had one since two thousand and eight. We're going to look at three-year-old kindergarten and the challenges of daycare for families in a daycare desert, and we're also going to look at our CTE, or Career Technical Education, programs. So thank you. Let's move forward together. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. My name is Brooks Galman, and I'm a fiscal officer with Serve Wisconsin, and I'm here today to talk about the one point six million dollar scholarship fund for AmeriCorps members found in Governor Evers' proposed budget. I'm speaking today as someone whose trajectory in life was forever changed by my service in AmeriCorps and the educational opportunities provided by me after my two years of service because of the Segal Education Award and receiving matching funds from an institution. For some quick context, one of the many benefits of AmeriCorps service includes receiving what's called the Segal Education Award, following your successful service term, which for full-time members is about the equivalent of a Pell Grant, which is about seventy-five hundred dollars. What these proposed funds in the governor's budget provides is a match to this award for any member who's served in Wisconsin and then chooses to attend an institution of higher education within the state. As I'm sure we're all aware, the cost of higher education continues to grow, and these funds can help mitigate those costs for young people who have brought an immense amount of value to their communities all across the state. I am living proof as a proud AmeriCorps alum who served for two years down in the great state of Texas. My time as a member helps spur my love for public service and tackling difficult policy issues. What's more than that, the education award afforded me the ability to pursue graduate school at the George H.W. Bush School of Government and Public Service down at Texas A&amp;M University, which graciously matched my education award dollars. My service and the ability to pursue a graduate degree in public policy and public administration forever changed my life, and like many AmeriCorps alums, has helped me to carry the spirit of service cultivated during my AmeriCorps service years into new spaces and new communities. I lived down in the tiny city of Milton, which is not bigger, much bigger than the city of Hayward, so I drove a long way to be here today. And I've spent more than five years now in state service, working in various departments and programs. This shift would allow school districts to be more responsive to the fluctuating demands and costs that we encounter. One of those things would be as our district alone transfers over one-million dollars per year to cover those costs into Fund 27. The other thing I mentioned was low revenue ceiling. Please consider raising that. Support for the low revenue ceiling adjustments in the past biennium have had a significant positive impact on the Boyceville Community School District. Low-revenue districts often struggle to provide the same level of educational services as their neighboring districts do. Steadily improving revenue ceiling policy is an important part to ensure equitable resources for all children, no matter where they live. As you begin the budget, please consider the important priorities that we set and allocate those resources accordingly. That's, I agree, we all agree that schools are a priority, and that's why I'm speaking here today, and thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, members of the Joint Finance Committee. Thank you for taking the time to visit my hometown of Hayward, Wisconsin. My name is Linda Hand, older person, city of Hayward, and Director of the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Washburn County. Every single person in this room has one thing in common: we are all aging. In Wisconsin, ADRCs and Older's American Act programs coordinate to ensure older adults and people with disabilities have access to the full range of services. The ADRC of Washburn County serves as a single point of entry for rural older adults and people with disabilities. We assist residents to access benefits, long-term care, dementia care and caregiver support, congregate and home-delivered meals, elder-disabled transportation, health promotion, and resources needed to remain living in their homes. Washburn County population sixty-plus is experiencing a substantial increase. State data shows 2020, thirty-eight percent of the overall population, with projections for 2030, forty-four, 2040, forty-five, and 2050, forty-six percent. Our combined 2025 ADRC aging budget is one-point-six million, of which five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand is county levy. It is our hope that the Joint Finance Committee will continue to support investments in the growing need for ADRC programs for all Wisconsin residents. Although Mrs. D could not be here, she asked I share her story. Last year, she was a full-time caregiver for her husband with cancer. Mrs. D was receiving dialysis three days a week due to complications of her own cancer. On those days, she was too weak to make her husband a meal, so they registered meals on wheels, soon after he passed. Mrs. D was depressed and not eating. Friends suggested she go to the senior center for a meal on her way home from dialysis. There were certain foods she could not eat. The doctor provided a list to our cook, and she supplemented the meal with other items so Mrs. D could still get a healthy meal and socialize with other seniors. Mrs. D became stronger, lab-stable, gained weight, and was happier. The doctor sent a note, "Whatever you're doing, keep doing it." A person interacts with an ADRC in Wisconsin every sixty seconds. We hope that you will support ADRCs. Thank you.
Hello, JFC members. Thanks for coming up north. I'm Barb Sorenson from Washburn, Wisconsin, Senator Quinn's district. I'm here to share my son Ole's Medicaid story. I'm Olaf. I live in my home, not an institution. I am developmentally disabled and forty-three years old. The owner of the home provides both paid and unpaid in-home care, and so does my mother. I work for the city of Ashland as a part-time laborer. I need care and supervision twenty-four-seven. This includes personal care, laundry, food prep, mental health care, medication management, and overnight care. Forward Horizons, a community services provider, you'll hear from them later, supports me in transportation and community inclusion activities in the community. I work part-time with my IRIS program, participant hired worker, as job coach and transportation provider. Medicaid provides all of this. With Medicaid as it is, I'm not always able to find people and agencies who are employed as caregivers, you know, to handle my complex needs. And there's caregiver crisis in Wisconsin, has been all of my son's life. If Medicaid is cut and he has less support than he has now, he won't be able to live in the community. No economic sense to that. People are going to lose their jobs. This is like, it's the right thing to do for people who are disabled. And forty years ago, I was told to put Ole in an institution, Mendota, permanently for his whole life. I was told he would never walk or talk, and I said, "Nah." And he's been in the community ever since. And let's be for community. Thank you.
My name is George Zaski. I'm from River Falls, Wisconsin. Thank you for being here. I am the parent of an adult son with a cognitive disability. In July of last year, my son moved into a place of his own with supports, a day I didn't know would ever come. It was an exciting and hopeful time. That hopefulness is now in danger. In August, we received notice that my son would be disenrolled from Medicaid because his MAP premium payment could not be processed. We had to scramble to address that. The end of October, we informed my son's budget for IRIS would be cut by thirty percent. No explanation was given. We scrambled to address that. This happened to the others that I know. In January, I attended my congressman's town hall. Some of you on this panel were in attendance. I went to the microphone to express my fear that eight-hundred-and-eighty-billion dollars in cuts were proposed for Medicaid. I was told not to worry. Folks like my son would be taken care of. In February, the budget resolution passed. We were again told there would be no cuts to Medicaid. On March seventh, the CBO released its analysis. It confirmed that major cuts to Medicaid are the only way to meet the House's eight-hundred-and-eighty-billion-dollar budget resolution requirement. Recently, DOGE shut down the Administration for Community Living. Earlier this month, AB-163 was introduced in Wisconsin. Among other things, it proposed doubling the paperwork to stay in Medicaid. More negative impacts keep coming. Families like mine are worried and fearful. In the near future, you are likely to have to make many difficult policy choices. Will you eliminate optional benefits? Will you cap benefits? Will long, long waiting lists return? Families like mine live every day in a precarious state. I respectfully ask that you keep people with disabilities in mind as you craft the next budget. Disability advocates like myself are ready to assist and have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. My name is David Ricard. I live in Washburn, Wisconsin. I'm seventy-two years old. I'm very concerned about the direction our country has chosen to pursue. As a Social Security current contributor and recipient, I'm very concerned about this integral portion of my financial future. For the last seventeen years, I've provided care in my home to an unrelated person with developmental disabilities. This person has been established to require institutional-level care twenty-four-seven by the Wisconsin DHS Family Care Program. The current objective of the leadership of Congress is to reduce or eliminate Medicaid will impact the family care program. Any reduction in support for this program will make it impossible for me to continue to providing care for this person. I will lose income that makes it possible to help provide this care. The person will once again become homeless and without care. What are the consequences to this person? Additionally, if Social Security is eliminated, I will be forced to sell my home if I can, and I will then become homeless myself. Our local economy will lose jobs. Twenty-four care involves agencies and individuals dedicated to providing family care services. Agencies will likely close, and individuals will have to find other employment. The state of Wisconsin is ultimately responsible for the care of institutionally-needed persons. Where will and how will this care be provided? Is the state prepared to house and care these individuals? And what will that cost? Have you thought of that? What trauma will this action inflict on these persons? Are you thinking of maybe filling up private prisons with these? For-profit prisons with these people? Good question. Think about it. Please support Governor Evers' proposal to accept Medicaid and expansion funds, and contact the federal reps in Congress and let them know what's going to happen to Wisconsin people.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Tribby. I'm a Battalion Chief with the City Superior Fire Department. I'm here on behalf of the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Association. I'd like to thank Senator Quinn and Representative Straub for their presence, along with all the committee members. I'd also like to say that I'm very honored to be here with all the other speakers. The passion today is nothing short of inspiring. I'm here today to speak on the importance of funding and increasing funding for the state hazmat team system. Superior and Douglas County have a unique relationship with the state hazmat plan as it was developed following a hazardous release of benzene that some of you might remember in nineteen-ninety-two. You may also be aware of a large explosion that happened in Superior in two thousand and eighteen. These are just two examples of the type of hazardous material problems that we face not only in our region, but throughout the state. We're not alone. There is multiple hazardous throughout the state that can lead to loss of life and large monetary expenditures. The state team system provides a seamless response and resource for hazardous material incidents throughout the state. Working with WEM, teams are available to assist throughout their regions. These incidents can vary from industrial releases to clandestine drug labs. Funding for the teams has been stagnant since reorganization in two thousand and thirteen. While we're appreciative of the funding, it is imperative that it continue, and more importantly, that it increases. This funding allows for the training and equipment to protect not only the residents of Superior and Douglas County, but the state as a whole. Simply put, a well-funded and trained hazardous material system keeps Wisconsinites safe and keeps our economic machine running when incidents occurs. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kathy Lois Hutton. I live in Hayward, Wisconsin. Thank you for listening. I'd like to make sure our environment and programs to decrease climate warming are in the final budget. Although I'm an educator and I value our public education, our libraries, and our arts, I was very sick this past year, and I realized that without our health, you can't enjoy the libraries, or the arts, or even my own education. To maintain everyone's health, we need clean air and we need clean water. Therefore, I have a short message regarding Enbridge and the Line Five pipeline. Enbridge is a massively rich Canadian company that also has other pipelines running under the Great Lakes basin, endangering Wisconsinites every day. Enbridge earns two-million dollars from Pipeline Five alone. Pipeline Five travels through northern Wisconsin, through Douglas, Bayfield, Ashland, and Iron Counties. The location of this pipeline's been analyzed and studied, and it's really frightening, because if there was an oil leak anywhere, this is the worst possible place in the Great Lakes that it could happen. And to make matters worse, this very pipeline's been damaged twice. First in two thousand and eighteen by a ship's anchor, and again in two thousand and twenty by a shifted screw. This pipeline's already leaked, not one time, not ten times, thirty-five times. It's leaked one-point-thirteen-million gallons of oil into Wisconsin's environment, endangering the wildlife, water, land, and the safety of everyone living here in Wisconsin. I don't know if you realize it, but Enbridge designed this pipeline to be only five, to last only fifty years, and it's now seventy years old, and it's failing, and it's weak. Our invaluable Great Lakes will be damaged forever if it leaks in our way of life and our land and our safety, should not be for sale. Enbridge wants to pay Badland River Band eighty-million dollars to reroute it, but why should they allow this? It's already, it's going to go through another watershed, and they've not kept the first pipeline up. So you, as our legislators, are supposed to be representing our welfare. Please, please help us to shut down Line Five. Please help us prioritize our environment here in Wisconsin. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I want to thank all of the representatives and the senators and your staff for your service to your communities. We appreciate that. I'm Bob Zimmerman, one of the Battalion Chiefs with Superior Fire. I'm also a Task Force Leader with Wisconsin Task Force One, and we're here today on behalf of the State Fire Chiefs Association in support of Wisconsin Task Force One. It is an asset that you have available to you in your communities. It's a hundred-and-thirty personnel that are highly trained. Most of them are firefighters, but we do have civilian assets, which would include structural engineers and canine and communication folks. The training is around two-hundred-and-forty hours to the technician level in several rescue disciplines, from ropes to confined space, to trench rescue, to swiftwater rescue swimmers and swiftwater boat operators, and structural collapse. We're housed in and out of Volk Field, and since we reorganized in two thousand and fourteen, that's been our central locale. We meet there for training and then also for deployments, and we've worked hard to get that deployment to notification plus six hours, we're on our way to your community for whatever is overwhelming your local resource. And it's an expensive resource, obviously. It's around eighteen-thousand dollars to bring those firefighters and those personnel up to that training level that is required, that technician level. And what we have asked, or if you've been, I know we've all been paying attention nationally to what's going on with the administration, but one of the most recent pushes is to take that federal response for disasters, both man and natural disasters, down to the state level, and we have an asset that's ready to support that. In order to do that, we will need the funding. In '21, the legislature directed that we become a Type One team, which is a hundred-and-eighty personnel. We're at a hundred-and-thirty. We're going to need some dollars to get up to that level to be able to support that mission when it becomes necessary in the state and surrounding areas. So we thank you for your support, for the legislation to get us to that point. We'd ask for the recurring funding that we asked for, four-and-a-half million dollars one time, two million dollars for fleet enhancement, and a million in each of the biennium for sustainment for training. Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members and other legislators. Up on the stage, I see a few old acquaintances and friends. You know, Senator Marklin included a clean water grant in legislation he sponsored for the city of Shell Lake. That grant became law, and the money made a difference in Shell Lake. And from, I'm a city alderman, and I'm also a county board supervisor. From my alderman hat, one of the thoughts I have is to adjust the parameters of the TID districts, flip them, sixty-five percent up to sixty-five percent for housing, minimum of thirty-five percent for commercial. Or alternatively, since Wisconsin communities differ, maybe do away with zoning requirements completely. This would go toward solving a workforce housing shortage that we have in our small communities. From a county supervisor viewpoint, workforce housing is also a shortage on a county level. But additionally, maintaining budgetary control due to revenue demands is a problem for our county. I'm certain that all of you have heard complaints about budget restraints, and I don't want to add to that complaint pile. But I hope you will continue to share increased shared revenues and the real estate tax transfer split. Also, Washburn County has been declared the second-most underserved county for broadband in our state. We need to join the twenty-first century. Our main streets need good broadband. Hopefully, the B process will work for us. Finally, I encourage all of you to work across the aisle. Old, hurt feelings need to be put aside, and if you can't get past that thinking, maybe you're in the wrong profession. We're counting on you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bonnie Reitz, and I'm a Client Service Specialist with the State Public Defender's Office for both the Peschigo and the Shano Trial Divisions. Our agency has requested forty-four additional support staff positions be allocated across the state to the offices where the need is the greatest. These additional positions, such as Client Service Specialists, Investigators, and Paralegals, would help to make our legal system more efficient. As a Client Service Specialist, I cover Marinette-
In '21, the legislator directed that we become a Type One team, which is 180 personnel. We're at 130. We're going to need some dollars to get up to that level to be able to support that mission when it becomes necessary in the state and surrounding areas. So we thank you for your support, for the legislation to get us to that point. We'd ask for the recurring funding that we asked for, four and a half million dollars one time, $2 million for fleet enhancement and a million in each of the bienniums for sustainment for training. Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members and other legislators. Up on the stage, I see a few old acquaintances and friends and I, you know, Senator Marklin included a clean water grant in legislation he sponsored for the city of Shell Lake. That grant was, became law and the money made a difference in Shell Lake. And from, I'm a city alderman and I'm also a county board supervisor. From my alderman hat, one of the thoughts I have is to adjust the parameters of the TID districts, flip them, 65% up to 65% for housing, minimum of 35% for commercial. Or alternatively, since Wisconsin communities differ, maybe do away with zoning requirements completely. This would go toward solving a workforce housing shortage that we have in our small communities. From a county supervisor viewpoint, housing, workforce housing is also a shortage on a county level. But additionally, maintaining budgetary control due to revenue demands is a problem for our county. I'm certain that all of you have heard complaints about budget restraints and I don't want to add to that complaint pile. But I hope you will continue to share, increase shared revenues and the real estate tax transfer split. Also, Washburn County has been declared the second most underserved county for broadband in our state. We need to join the 21st century. Our, our main streets need good broadband. Hopefully, the B process will work for us. Finally, I encourage all of you to work across the aisle. Old hurt feelings need to be put aside and if you can't get past that thinking, maybe you're in the wrong profession. We're counting on you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bonnie Reitz and I'm a client service specialist with the State Public Defender's Office for both the Peschigo and the Shano Trial Divisions. Our agency has requested 44 additional support staff positions be allocated across the state to the offices where the need is the greatest. These additional positions such as client service specialists, investigators and paralegals would help to make our legal system more efficient. As a client service specialist, I cover Marinette, Okano and Shano Counties and I assist, assist six attorneys, some with caseloads over 200 clients and a waitlist that is difficult to keep up with. In my role, I build that bridge between the attorneys, the clients and many times the client's family members. On any given day, I am given requests by all or most of the attorneys to assist with getting social histories, medical records, making referrals for treatment options and writing sentencing memos. This allows the attorneys more time to focus on the legal aspects of the case. I am here today not only to speak about the issues the Public Defender's Office around the states are facing, but to advocate for my position and to advocate for the clients I assist. Many of our clients are dealing with mental health issues such as anxiety. This leads clients to do, to call their attorneys multiple times a day just for reassurance and updates. With the caseload our attorneys have, it's simply not feasible for the attorneys to take all of these calls. My position allows, my position makes it possible for clients to get that reassurance that they are being heard and that they are important to the State Public Defender's Office. I have just a few statements from family members that I've helped. Thank you so much for caring and for sticking with my grandson through this process. You are an answer to a prayer. Again, I am grateful for your help in getting this issue resolved. Thank you. You're the best. A text message I just received from somebody that I assisted in getting, thank you.
Don Posh, Spooner, Wisconsin. Taxation without representation. Here we go again. Even when Republicans, Democrats and independents overwhelmingly agree on marijuana legalization, you refuse to do what we, the people, want, which allows billions in revenue to go out to our neighboring states. It's all about the money. We saw it in the judge's election. We don't want George Soros or Elon Musk's money to influence our elections in Wisconsin. They don't live here. And the Enbridge pipeline, the Canadians rejected the Trans Canada pipeline, so Enbridge came to America where the politicians are more purchasable and continued to use their money to buy love from political whores. Enbridge gets the revenues and we get the risk. Your job is to bring our federal tax dollars back to Wisconsin to improve the lives of your constituents. Medicaid expansion may not help me directly, but it'll help my neighbor and other fellow citizens. Refusing this money is like saying, no, I don't want my Christmas bonus. So even if a million of us gave $10 each to support a candidate that we all believe in, some multimillionaire can give 50 million and write it off on their taxes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, representatives and members of the Joint Finance Committee. My name's Joe Weiss. I'm a lifelong resident of Wisconsin, born in Waukesha, lived in Peewaqui, grew up in Eau Claire and went to college and graduated from the University of Wisconsin Superior. I've lived in Spooner for 44 years. I currently serve as president of the Spooner School Board. With me are two of my colleagues who will speak on special ed and also our superintendent, Dr. Dave Aslan. We are a district with approximately 1,173 students and 161 employees. We are the third largest employer in Washburn County and our district encompasses 550 square miles. In order to maintain what we have for facilities and operational expenses, we have gone to our public twice in the last four years for an operational and a capital referendum. Even so, based on the current educational funding structure for public schools in Wisconsin, we are projected to have a two and a half million dollar shortfall for the 2027-28 school year. Major drivers contributing to this shortfall are inflation, competitive wages, student transportation costs and declining enrollments, to name a few. We strive to be fiscally responsible by trying to identify places to save money. For example, reducing positions, reducing bus routes, freezing operational budgets and early retirement of our existing debt. In addition, we have collaborated, collaborated with neighboring districts and sports and sharing other services and faculty. The big problem as I see it is the out-of-date aid formula that we still operate under from the 1990s. We suffer, as do other schools in our part of the state, with high property values and a declining enrollment. Our high property values continue to rise due to the influx of primarily out-of-state people who come here to retire, to live the good life on their little piece of paradise. However, for the most part, they have no children and no skin in the game. We live in an economically depressed area with limited employment opportunities and as a result, the kids we have can't stay. We are not a wealthy community and continue to experience an increase in children on free and reduced lunches. Because of our situation and, and with no consideration for the increase in the cost to operate due to inflation and the cost of living and with no change in the equalized aid formula every year, we can, we rely on the local taxpayers to continue to be asked to provide the large majority of the revenue for our district. We lose about 15% of equalized aid every year. Over the last years, that percentage has gone from 56% to 74%. It's quite clear to me there needs to be a change and a renewed focus in Madison on supporting our public schools in a fair and equitable way. Public schools are the cornerstone of democracy. They are the identity of our northern towns and the supplier of our future members of society. We need to provide the education opportunities for them to succeed in life, no matter what part of this state they live in. Thank you. And I'll, I'll yield to my colleague here.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm Tim Radke. I'm the Director of Special Education in Luck, Minong and Spooner. And the recurring theme I'm seeing is with the lower reimbursement rate, districts are really struggling to remain competitive in the job market. When we look at Spooner's budget this next year, we're going to be transferring 1.8 million dollars from the general fund to provide special education services. The day-to-day operational issues we have is getting talent into our school districts that can work with kids with special needs. We're not competitive with the current funding we have and the problem is we have to hire outside contractors to provide those services at an exponentially higher rate. So because we don't have enough money, we actually end up paying far more money for our services. And if we're not able to provide those services even through contractors, it becomes even more expensive to make up those services. These are the things that keep me awake at night. I think these are, if there are other directors in the room, that keep us awake at night because we are really in it for the children. We want, we want to get them early. We want them to have early intervention because the better we do it, the quicker they don't need those services.
A reallocation of equalized aid to provide $1,000 per pupil would mean a huge difference to districts like Spooner that have declining enrollment and rapidly increasing property values. Small changes at the state level equal big impact for local districts. Thank you for your leadership and for all that you do for the children and families of Wisconsin and through your support of public education. Thank you.
I have Skylar R. with Northwest Wisconsin CEP. Johnny Zick, Z-I-C-H or K, I believe. Bob Osgard. Benjamin Barrett. Kathleen Pakes, P-A-K-E-S. Fawn Moses. Bridget Kraus. Jennifer Bass, B-I-A-S. Kate Nohan, K-N-O-W-H, I think it's O-N, Disability Rights of Wisconsin. Angie Stufliff, S-U-T-L-I-F-F. Lois Ladenthin. And then we have a group, School District of Ashland with Melissa Gassert, Amanda Tudors and Katie Mathis. The school district here signed in at 8:45.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks also for struggling through all of the names. I can't, I don't envy you one bit. Thanks so much to the members of the Joint Finance Committee, sorry, for being here and for being in person and agreeing to listen to all of your constituents throughout the state. We really appreciate your time. I'm here, my name is Amy Workman. I'm here to speak in favor of fully funding the Educational Communications Board, which supports PBS Wisconsin and Wisconsin Public Radio. Public media is the primary broadcasting relay for the statewide emergency alert system and Wisconsin's NOAA Weather Service Network, which issues weather warnings and safety alerts for extreme weather, like the type that's coming toward us today from the southwestern corner of the state. PBS One provides uninterrupted distribution of wireless emergency alerts and partners with emergency responders, state and federal entities to ensure statewide coverage of emergency information. Regardless of where Wisconsinites live in the state, we all deliver, we all deserve access to information during emergencies and PBS provides that. I grew up watching Wisconsin Public Television. I can still remember all the lyrics and theme song to 321 Contact. My nieces and nephew grew up watching Wild Kratts, their favorite show. My oldest niece is now studying biology and to become a biologist because of her fascination with animals that was inspired by that show. And as a teacher, I utilize PBS Wisconsin Education's Meet the Lab, which shows real people of all backgrounds doing research to make discoveries and improve the lives of others. Showing my high school students interviews of a young scientist not much older than them, whose spinal cord injury got her interested in stem cells and pursuing a career in research highlights that anyone curious can become a scientist and work to find answers to questions. I also rely on public media as a trusted source of information and regularly watch shows like Here and Now, Wisconsin Life, and we need this service to provide reliable fact-based information in today's landscape of misinformation and this secession of fact-checking. Please support funding of the Educational Communications Board. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Skylar Durrell-Ader and I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Wisconsin SEP, a private, nonprofit workforce development organization that has served 10 counties in rural northern Wisconsin for over 57 years. I am here today with our Finance Director, Michelle Smith. Our main offices are located in Ashland, Park Falls and Superior with outreach sites throughout the region. When SEP was founded in 1968, we received 1.6 million dollars in federal funding. Adjusted for inflation, that would be nearly $14 million today. Yet this year, our region is expected to receive just 880,000 in Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, or WEOWA, funding to share among organizations and individuals across 10 counties. In the past two years, we've had to eliminate over half of our staff, leaving only 14 employees. Those lost include career planners, youth mentors and outreach specialists, who are essential in helping people rebuild their lives through job placement, training and support. We are also losing over $300,000 in funding for health insurance navigation across 27 counties that we serve under that program, a critical service for people at their most vulnerable, immediately after a job loss, when oftentimes the loss of a job means loss of insurance, making it hard to get the medications and care they need. We continue to advocate for federal solutions, but the reality is clear. We cannot rely on Washington DC alone. We must also get meaningful support from the state of Wisconsin. We are not asking for a handout. We're asking for a partnership, one that ensures rural families have access to the services that they need to succeed. State investment could preserve essential programs, create new opportunities and help keep rural Wisconsin strong. Workforce development is about more than just jobs. It's about stability, it's about resilience and it's about giving people the tools to survive and thrive. Thank you for your time and for considering the critical role the state support can play in safeguarding the future of our rural communities. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joni Zeke. I'm a board member and volunteer for the Hayward Community Food Shelf. We began serving Sawyer County and the greater Hayward area in 1985. That's right. Our volunteer-run food shelf is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year. In, in 2024, Sawyer County received greater than $43,000 worth of food grown in Wisconsin from the Local Food Purchase Assistance Program. I'm asking you here today to include financing for the Local Food Purchasing Assistance Program, known as LFPA, in the state budget as the USDA has eliminated funding for this program. LFPA is a win-win program, paying Wisconsin farmers to raise food, which is then free to providers like the food shelf. We have received a variety of Wisconsin-grown food, fresh produce like lettuce and carrots, and we were, have also been able to introduce our clients to new vegetables like bok choy and kohlrabi. We also received different types of flowers, whole wheat, rye, corn and a variety of meat and poultry. I had the experience and pleasure of distributing farm-raised ducks to our clients. And this food was very nutritious and it gives choices to low-income families that rarely do they have the opportunity to enjoy. On behalf of the 701 families totaling 1,776 individuals served by the Hayward Community Food Shelf, we are asking the Wisconsin State Legislature to allocate $2.25 million per year in the state budget for the continuation of the LFPA program. Thank you.
Good afternoon. And thank you for coming to Hayward. Much appreciated you being here and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Bob Osgard. I represent Washburn County's District 10 on the Washburn County Board of Supervisors. I also represent my county on the Board of the Northwest Wisconsin Concentrated Employment Program, known as Northwest SEP. You've previously heard from our director. For 57 years, since 1968, they've provided help for people who need jobs in Ashland, Bayfield, Burnett, Douglas, Iron, Price, Rusk, Sawyer, Taylor and Washburn Counties. That's pretty much the northwest corner of the state. 175,000 people live in the northwest corner right now and the region covers 10,000 square miles. So let's look at those numbers. They're not very close together. Beyond that, the northwest corner of the state is quite poor by the standards that you have in Madison and Milwaukee. So I think a third of Washburn County is actually eligible for Medicaid, a needs-based program. The point of it is that SEP staff help people access employment with education, training, support services, so they can succeed in the labor market. SEP also works with the region's businesses so that they can get the best, best qualified employees. We're hoping, and I say hoping, that given the fact that we've lost staff, we've had to close offices, that you can look within the biennial budget to what you can do with the Department of Workforce Development portion thereof to see if we can get a more vigorous partnership with this incredible, long-lasting job service in Wisconsin. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Fawn Moses and I'm the Appellate Division Director with the State Public Defender's Office. In this capacity, I oversee the division responsible for handling appeals. Every defendant is entitled to the right to an appeal, which is essentially a review of their case to ensure its accuracy and fairness. With a limited number of appellate staff attorneys and private bar partners, we handle all eligible client appeals statewide. We are currently facing a significant backlog. We do not have enough attorneys to review cases and handle the appeals, which is causing additional delays in an already slow appeal process. As a result, individuals are waiting in prison longer for their cases to be reviewed and potential errors remain undiscovered until an appellate attorney is appointed and able to review the case. In some instances, appellate attorneys, individuals, I'm sorry, in some instances, individuals may even complete their sentences before receiving appellate review. I often receive calls from prospective clients and concerned family members who are anxious and frustrated about the delays in appellate attorney appointments. I struggle to provide a satisfactory response beyond telling them that there are just too many cases and not enough appellate attorneys to handle them. To help address the backlog and enhance the efficiency of our criminal legal system, we are requesting 6.5 additional appellate attorney positions. I'm also asking for your support for merit pay for our attorneys so we can retain them and ensure we are providing the highest quality representation to our clients. Thank you for considering this important request.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. You have some very serious decisions to make. My name is Kathy. My name is Kathleen Pakes. I'm also with the Public Defender Agency. I'm the Assigned Counsel Division Director, the Assigned Counsel Division of the State Public Defender. We recruit and retain private bar members to represent our clients. Traditionally, it's about 35% of our cases are assigned out. The issue I would like to address is the rate for attorneys that are handling, handling serious felony cases. The, our clients that are accused often have high bonds, they languish in the jails, and we have a difficult time finding qualified private bar to represent them. Obviously, this is a drain on the local community housing people in jails and also with court dates that we keep churning, waiting for status conference and waiting for appointment. In our budget, to address this issue, we have requested an increase in the private bar rate from 100 to $125 per hour. Historically, we've, I've been around a while, I, we recognize that when our rates have increased, we have been able to retain or recruit more private bar, retain them, and the private bar we have are more willing to handle more cases. Secondly, I believe that the differential also reflects what is done in the private sector, which is private lawyers charge more for the more serious and more difficult cases. So, on behalf of the State Public Defender Agency and our private bar partners, we thank you for your consideration of this budget item.
Good afternoon. I'm Bridget Crowsey. I'm the Trial Division Director for the Public Defender's Office. So, you get three different positions here this afternoon. There's two things that I talk to young, bright lawyers about when I try to convince them to stay in Wisconsin or to convince them to come to Wisconsin. One is money. How much can we pay them and how will they continue to earn so they can support their families if they come or they stay in Wisconsin? And the second thing is workload. We've all heard the workload of public defenders and how it can be crushing. I've been a lawyer for 25 years, a majority of that time in the Public Defender's Office, and I have felt that over the years. And the way that we can help lawyers when it comes to these crushing workloads is our support staff. You heard from Bonnie earlier, she's a client service specialist, she helps our clients, she works with lawyers. That's what we're asking for. We're asking the legislature to fund the support staff positions that we need in order to support our clients and to support our lawyers. We're also asking for funding of merit pay. We're also asking you to support the DA's office and their support for merit pay because we understand in order to keep really talented lawyers in Wisconsin, to recruit really talented lawyers to Wisconsin, we need to be able to support them so that they can support themselves and their families moving forward. So, I'm asking you to consider those two things when you go forth for joint finance, again, to support the DA's office and the Public Defender's Office in merit pay and to support us in positions. Thank you.
Hello there, folks. How is this, am I close now? I'm Benjamin James Barrett. I'm Chairperson of Your Wisconsin Council on Physical Disabilities and Chairperson Mark Line. We've worked together and Senator Staff Schultz in the past. You folks have been supportive and done a lot of good work with us, and thank you. The phone numbers on the gas pumps at Quick Trip were us, and we entered into dialogue there so that people with mobility challenges could get services without honking their horn. So, thank you. My, I'm here to talk about budgets, of course. I live in Washburn County and we're the broadband, one of the broadband deserts. The one kicker about the lack of broadband access is for family care and IRIS workers. They can't, they have to log in by phone. They can't do it digitally like you can down south because we don't have 5G. And the platform that the employees use to report their wages and hours requires a 5G platform. So, it's really needed. The other thing is, I'm here, I started doing this over 25 years ago. I know it's a long ride from Madison and thank you guys for coming. It's definitely a trip. We started asking for you folks to consider reallocating some of the funds you were spending for people in northern, central, and southern centers for developmentally disabled. Today, there are about 240 people left in like central and southern center, and they cost us over $700,000 a year per person. We can spend the money smarter and better, and I would thank you guys for working on it and push it ahead for us.
Hi, I came today to ask for help for our small rural community. My name's Angie Sutliff and I'm the Commissioner of the Downsboro Sanitary District. Our town's sole source of clean, safe drinking water and fire protection is our 50,000 gallon water tower. A leak in the filled drain pipe was discovered in February. It's been temporarily patched but shows a vulnerability in the overall condition of the pipe. Further inspection of the water tower revealed that it's out of compliance with DNR code and is in urgent need of rehabilitation. One of the biggest needs beyond the filled drain pipe is exterior and interior coating and repainting. It's been delayed several times over the past few years due to lack of funds. Recent paint contaminants report revealed that we do have lead and other contaminants in the current paint that would drive the cost of blasting and recoating up because it had, would have to be fully contained. So, it brings our costs to between $4,000 and $500,000, which our small community simply can't afford. This is a one-time project, but it's well outside of our budget. The cost estimate covers all the necessary repairs to bring it back into compliance, and our state representative, Christian Phelps, recently came to our water tower site and expressed support for this project to ensure clean and safe drinking water to residents and small businesses of Downsboro. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Bias. I am the State Public Defender. And our State Public Defender Office provides constitutionally mandated service, services to 72 counties in our state. We do that out of 40 offices, and we are happy to be here at what I consider to be ground zero in our constitutional crisis at this time. We assign more than 150,000 cases and matters to our staff and to private bar across the state annually. We also provide services out of 40 offices that cover those 72 counties that I mentioned before. We are poised to address the current backlog. Our offices in this region include Superior, Ashland, and Spooner. Failing to address this constitutional crisis is really going to impact local county members. Right now, we have a backlog where folks are sitting in jail, they're waiting to be appointed an attorney, which means they come back to court repeatedly, over and over and over again, to see a judge, a prosecutor, and talk about the fact that they have no attorney. That's a waste of time, that's definitely a waste of money. And that's going on in northern Wisconsin, western Wisconsin, frankly, many of our counties in the state right now. We need to pay private attorneys, as you heard from my predecessors, $125 an hour to handle serious public defender-appointed cases. We believe that that will attract them to do that work for us. We also need to pay our staff lawyers the merit fee. The merit amount is something that I thank this group for paying in the last budget in 2023. It did a great job of retaining lawyers for us. We would ask that merit not only for us, but for prosecutors also be included. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Louise Ladensohn. I'm from the town of Ojibwa, right here in Sawyer County in this great state of Wisconsin. I'm a mom of three, a grandmother of nine, a great-grandmother of 12, a lifelong resident of this state. My ancestors left Milwaukee to come up here to Sawyer County in 1919. I had a life of public service in addition to this busy family life. I am proud to say and happy to say that with the help of Wisconsin's WIT system, WITC Voc Ed System, I became a licensed, when it started in 1975, they called us ambulance drivers. We currently are called EMTs or medics. And I will reach my 50th anniversary in July of this year. And then, I will retire 100% from that active duty, or from that duty. I'm not active in it. I work with our Medical Reserve Corps here in Sawyer County, and I'm also on Wisconsin's Weaver State Program. So, when you write your budget, here's my ideas. Please include dollars for capital investments to remediate PFAS, lead, nitrate contamination in our waters. Put some dollars into the Knowles-Nelson stewardship program, a lot of them, because that covers our state and local parks, our recreation programs. It helps maybe expand some trails, which are so vital to our tourism industry. It can have habitat restoration as one of its projects, and I would like to see it establish a tribal-state partnership that could manage our ceded lands better than they are now. Dollars for community-based withdrawal management centers to help people who are seeking treatment for AOD use disorders. Dollars for mental health services in our communities, along with dollars to local governments to help prevent and treat mental health. So, most of yous are going to be up for office at some, or up for reelection at some point, and you could leave as a, you could leave behind some good stuff if you would help the state of Wisconsin meet these needs. And I thank you for being here.
Thank you. We'll take a brief poll here to call up some more individuals. Josh Robinson. Tom Boisvert, B-O-I-S-V-E-R-T. Sharon Millman, Barron County, along with Michelle Wick of Douglas County. Scott Smith. We've got Wisconsin DA's Association, Mark, I think it's F-R-U-E-H-E-R-F. Andrea Nodoff, M-N-O-D-O, I think it's L-F. Scott Jones. Terry Dusen, D-U-S-E-N, I believe. Christine Frane, Fran, F-R-A-N-E. Addie Newman. Brooke Kulzer, K-U-L-Z-E-R. And Rebecca Stiles. And Rebecca registered at 8:49.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kate Nolton. What a day, what a day. Thank you so much for being here. I'm not sure what time it is, but you have a harder job than me. I'm not accustomed to this whatsoever. I very proudly live in Stone Lake, Wisconsin. Used to live actually in Senator Johnson's arena, and I do adore Milwaukee, but I very, very proudly have been living here for about the last eight years. Yeah. I work as a supervising attorney at Disability Rights Wisconsin, where I supervise in the victim advocacy program. So, my job is to represent victims of crime, people who have been disabled. DRW is one of the many organizations across the state that's been impacted by the massive federal funding cuts of programs that support victims of crime and especially people with disabilities. People with disabilities are disproportionately impacted by all types of crime, and DRW is the only statewide program that works with survivors of any type of crime with disabilities. The annual VOCA funding, Victims of Crime Act funding, was cut by more than three quarters at the beginning of October of 2024. So, my program is cut. We're trying to figure out how to fold people in, and you all understand that, I know. Totally understand what we're talking about here. A significant investment by the state as a part of the state budget process is required to maintain any kind of meaningful statewide support for victims of crime and as disproportionately people with disabilities are victimized. In addition, DRW recommends an investment of at least $17 million by the state to support civil legal aid services. Wisconsin is one of only 14 states that provides no financial support for civil legal aid from the GPR. People with disabilities are disproportionately low-income and at risk for greater victimization. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Tudor. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our students, our educators, and our community in the School District of Ashland. As you know, public education is the foundation of our state's future, and yet, for many low-income districts across Wisconsin, that foundation is becoming increasingly unstable. We face rising needs and flatlining support. We cannot continue to rely on local referendums to fund basic operations. It's not sustainable, it's not equitable, and it's dividing our communities. In Ashland, we recently passed our first-ever operational referendum, but only on our second try, and only after months of immense effort, public meetings, and difficult conversation. It brought to light a hard truth. When a community has to fight over whether its children deserve a quality education, we all lose. Special education is a particularly urgent concern. Our reimbursement rate remains under 30%. That means a district like ours is forced to pull money from our critical areas just to meet federally mandated special education services. Our needs in this area are rising dramatically, but the funding isn't keeping pace. This isn't a luxury, it's a necessity. These are our most vulnerable students, and we are asking for the resources to meet their needs with the dignity and the support that they deserve. We know the state is currently in a budget surplus. What better time to make a meaningful investment in our schools, especially in those that are serving low-income and rural communities? Every child in Wisconsin deserves the same chance to succeed, regardless of their zip code or their family's income. We are not asking for handouts, we're asking for fairness. We're asking for the state to step up so our local communities don't have to step in time and time again just to keep the lights on in our classrooms. Our children deserve more, our educators deserve more, and our communities deserve the hope and unity that comes when they can say with confidence, "The state of Wisconsin is investing in our future." Our asks, our special education funding to 60%, and a low revenue ceiling to equal our private school vouchers at a minimum. I would recommend $12,600. Thank you for your time.
My name, my name is Melissa Gesert. I'm the Director of Student Services at the School District of Ashland, and I'm here to speak specifically regarding special education funding. In the School District of Ashland, we have approximately 17% of our student population identified as having a disability and receiving services. These services range from speech and language therapy to highly intensive supports required for them to be able to access our educational programs and environments to ensure that they are making progress towards their IEP goals while reaching their fullest potential. There's a huge gap in funding that schools receive in order to provide these absolutely necessary services to a population of students with the highest needs. Like Amanda had previously stated, our reimbursement rate for special education services is currently under 30%. It's just simply not adequate. I am requesting that the state super, or the state reimbursement percentage increase in order to close the special education funding gap by providing at least a 60% reimbursement rate. An increase to 60%, which is still below the reimbursement rate that is provided to private schools who participate in the voucher or scholarship programs. Private schools are already funded at a higher rate per pupil than our district is. Our students with disabilities should not be treated any less than a student attending a private school. The funding we currently receive for special education is just simply insufficient. This deficit in funding results in our district alone transferring approximately $2 million annually from our general fund to cover these costs. Across the entire state, over $1 billion is transferred from general funds across the districts to cover special education services. This is glaring evidence that the special education funding in Wisconsin is just simply not enough, and something needs to change. Students with disabilities across the state of Wisconsin need to be provided, no wait, they deserve to be provided, with equitable, adequate state funding that will allow districts to be able to provide these necessary services to our students with disabilities.
I'm Petey Mathias. I'm the Director of Student Learning for the School District of Ashland, and I am here to speak on the lack of adequate and equitable funding for our schools. With current funding, our district barely has enough to pay for all the staffing needed to support our students. We used ESSER to support critical positions in our schools, deans, counselors, and school psychiatrists. These positions impact over 300 students per day in our buildings. students per day in our buildings. They provide interventions, counseling, and work with our families so all children are making gains. We cannot be successful as a district without them. We are so thankful for our referendum passing so we can keep these supports for our students, but as Amanda said, a community should not have to fight over whether its children deserve a quality education. And with our current funding, we are forced to choose between having staff and being able to invest in them. Our teachers face a diversity of needs every day in the classroom in order to equip them in successfully serving our students, and they need support. Regular training and resources are essential in ensuring our staff are able to meet the needs of each and every child in our classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Hi there.
Hi, my name is Josh Robinson. I am the Assistant State Superintendent for the Division of Academic Excellence at the Department of Public Instruction and a former School District Superintendent in Northwest Wisconsin. At this pivotal time, State Superintendent Underly proposed a bold, student-centered budget aimed to maximize our impacts with students, schools, and communities. Governor Evers included many of these same priorities in his budget, and I'm here today to urge you to pass the governor's K-12 education budget recommendations. DPI's vision is clear: Engage Learners, Creating a Better Wisconsin Together. Yet, public schools continue to face the challenge of underfunding and insufficient resources while being asked to do more, not less. They have done this for too long. Sustained underfunding strains learning environments, negatively impacts student success, and limits community growth. Investing in public education is an investment in students, communities, local businesses, local jobs, Wisconsin's workforce, and our wider state economy. A historic number of school districts are forced to go to referendum asking their residents to increase their own property taxes. And these residents are showing their support for their schools, but this means our communities are consistently asked to do more to financially support schools. We can help. We must raise the special education reimbursement rate to at least sixty percent. Maxing out thirty percent is unacceptable and diverts funds from a district's general operation fund, in turn, driving districts towards referendums. Additionally, we need to address revenue limits, which haven't kept pace with inflation since two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand nine, I'm sorry. These two examples offer an incredible opportunity to support our schools and communities, and this budget addresses real urgent needs in additional areas as well: school nutrition, 4K early learning, student mental health, and educator recruitment and retention. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good afternoon. Like many others present today, I'd like to begin by thanking the Joint Finance Committee members for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Bouvet, and I serve as the Conservation Program Manager for Lincoln County, Wisconsin. I'm here today not only as a conservationist, but also a representative of my county. My Oversight Committee has directed me to advocate on their behalf to make an important ask. Specifically, I'm here to ask committee members to provide twenty-point-two million dollars in annual base funding to support county conservation staff in Wisconsin through the Department of Ag, Trade, and Consumer Protections budget. All counties are required to develop and implement a land and water resource management plan. These plans detail how each county will preserve and restore the soil and water resources within their bounds. County conservation staff implement these plans and administer programs to preserve farmland, reduce non-point source pollution, limit the spread of invasive species, protect drinking water, and fulfill many other county-specific priorities. As these goals are achieved, the public benefits from clean surface and groundwater, sustainable and resilient food systems, and the economic influx from outdoor tourism are felt far and wide. On a regular basis, landowners contact county land and water conservation offices with a simple statement: "I have a problem, and I don't know what to do." My job, along with other county conservation staff in the state, is to solve those problems. County conservation staff are the boots-on-the-ground technical experts who help landowners and farmers meet their management goals while meeting baseline conservation standards. County conservation staff provide assistance toward implementing conservation practices that are proven, practical, and cost-effective. In order to accomplish the shared goals of preserving our state's natural resources that drive our economies and way of life, it is prudent that sufficient state aid is provided. I again want to thank you for your time and your consideration to provide twenty-point-two million dollars in annual base funding to support county conservation staff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Milleran. I'm the Barron County Clerk of Circuit Court. I am here with Michelle Wick, the Douglas County Clerk of Circuit Court, who will provide her own testimony. We are all elected officials, just like all of you, that took a note to support the Constitution and represent the constituents that elected us. We are here today to ask that you support the Wisconsin Clerks of Circuit Court's request to add seventy million dollars annually to the Circuit Court Support Payment. This proposal has the full support of the Wisconsin Counties Association. Why are we asking for this request? The short answer is because there is an imbalance between the cost of operating in the courts between the state and counties. In twenty twenty-four, Barron County received almost one-point-two million dollars. Over nine-hundred thousand dollars of that went back to the state, and Barron County retained two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, not quite twenty-one percent. The state has been supporting the counties with the same formula for at least the past twenty-five years. In twenty twenty-four, the state paid to counties combined twenty-eight-point-five million. Included in that twenty-eight-point-five million is the state's contribution toward guardian ad litem and interpreter expenditures. In twenty twenty-four, Barron County received from the state sixty-six thousand three-hundred-and-six dollars for guardian ad litem and seven thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars for interpreter. Actual expenses were two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars and nineteen-thousand dollars respectively. Governor Evers did include an increase to the Circuit Court Support Payment in his proposed budget, but it comes with strings attached that we counties want to avoid as this money is deposited into our county general funds. It is used where needed by counties, which brings me to my final point. In Barron County, it took us twenty years to get a full-time security officer at the front doors operating the metal detector. Finally, in the twenty twenty-five budget, the county board approved the position to screen everyone entering the Justice Center. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Mark Fruehau from the District Attorney from Douglas County. With me is Andrea Nodoff, who is the Dunn County District Attorney. We're here to speak in favor of fully funding pay progression for assistant district attorneys to make permanent the twenty-eight and a half current federally funded position statewide that will expire in July. And as you've heard from the many representatives from the public defender's office, we strongly support the requests they are making of you as well. The requests that we're asking you to consider have a significant impact on keeping our communities safe. Assistant DA's do a lot. Charging review, bail recommendations, ensuring victims' rights are complied with, ensuring defendants get their discovery that they need, and preparing and trying cases are all things that assistant DA's do. Recruitment and retention of assistant DA's is crucial to public safety. It's been a struggle statewide, and it's really been a struggle in smaller and northern counties such as ours. In the last year, I've lost two experienced assistant DA's to Minnesota for better-paying jobs as prosecutors there. When I do get applicants, I usually get a handful, two or three applicants, who have far less experience for the most part. So what you've heard today about the need to recruit and retain the attorneys that we have working for the government is real, and we'd ask you to consider that. Thank you.
And I would just echo what Mark has to say. I've been a prosecutor for fifteen years, and it used to be, people wanted these jobs. There'd be multiple applicants in Dunn County. I had a position open for five, six months, and, you know, no real credible person to fill the position, and that just increases the burden on everyone else. And it's just so important that we can fill these positions. Secondly, I would mention that there's been an increase in penalties and minimum mandatories, and I support that legislative change. However, defendants have, you know, more to lose, so they're more willing to take matters to trial, and so we need public defenders to represent them, and we need assistant district attorneys to prosecute these. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Wick with the Douglas County Clerk of Courts. I'm here with Sharon Milleran of the Barron Counties Clerk of Courts to ask the following. Wisconsin Clerk of Courts Association is asking that you support the request to add seventy million dollars annually to the Circuit Court Support Payment, which has the support of the Wisconsin Counties Association, along with the majorities of counties passing the resolutions in support of this, including Douglas and Barron Counties. Some of the reasons we are asking for the request are as follows. When the state implemented that the county's tax levy cannot be increased more than the net new construction for the next year's budget, Douglas County, along with other many counties, have not been able to raise their budget more than two percent, which in totality is about one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars a year for the entire county's budget. The cost to operate the courts in Douglas County have continually risen, while the Circuit Court Support Payments have stayed relatively the same for the last twenty-five years. From twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three, the annual payment has only risen one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. Costs have risen, but the numbers have not, are not a true reflection of actual costs, and my office has been short-staffed for more than, most of the seven years. Wages have not kept up with the cost of living, making it difficult to hire employees. Attorney costs in Douglas County have also went from thirty-eight thousand in twenty seventeen to fifty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-three and are continuing to climb. This is true not with just our county, but most other counties. Anything that's ordered by the courts, such as evaluations, attorney appointments, and guardian ad litem, to name a few, are paid by the court. These events are costing more and are becoming more frequently. Jury costs are also another issue. They're twenty, twenty-five dollars a day. Most people earn more than that, and it's hard for them to come and be a juror in our county. The governor did approve a seventy, seventy-million-dollar payment, but he wants to have strings on it, and it's maybe a one-time payment. We're asking it to be put in there annually, and we're asking no strings attached to it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here. I am here with Chesney Shutt behind me, and the staff Beth Metcalf, and we have some members with us, Stanley, Gigi, and Kelly. My name is Kristin Frane, and I have had the incredible honor of serving as the Director of Ventures Unlimited for the past twenty-eight years. At Ventures, we are dedicated to a simple but powerful mission of empowering individuals with disabilities to live full and meaningful lives. We help people find jobs in the communities. We provide transportation, job training, and support so individuals can stay in their own homes, connected to their communities, and far away from institutional care. In every service we provide, we are building hope, opportunity, and independence. Today, I am here to urge you, on behalf of thousands across Wisconsin, to approve the full Cost-to-Continue Medicaid budget. This funding is not just about dollars and cents. It's about dignity, independence, and the future we want to create together. In my twenty-eight years leading Ventures Unlimited, we have seen very few increases in our funding. Apart from a modest two-percent state-directed increase, we have not even received basic cost-of-living adjustments, despite a world where costs continue to climb. In just the past six years, we've had to double our staff wages, simply to compete for the dedicated professionals who make our work possible. The budget includes three critical streams of funding: the direct-care workforce funding, the state-directed rate increase, which was originally funded through ARPA funds, and the minimum-fee schedule funding. Together, these streams have been a lifeline. They help us close the widening gap between stagnant reimbursement rates and rising costs, especially when it comes to paying fair, competitive wages to our direct-care heroes. And here's why that matters so deeply. Without this funding, access to home and community-based services will disappear. Individuals will be forced into costly nursing homes and institutions, places that cost the state ten times more than what we are charging. Right now, even at current funding levels, providers are struggling, inflation is relentless, and the workforce shortage is real. And without action, the supports that thousands rely on will crumble. I also urge you to maintain funding for the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. DVR has seen a thirty-one percent increase in demand since twenty twenty-three. At Ventures, we have four full-time job developers ready to meet this need, and the more we can help individuals find employment, the more we can help them pay taxes, contribute to their communities, and often move off of benefits altogether. This is a smart investment. This is a long-term vision. This is how we build a stronger Wisconsin for everyone. Approving this budget is about more than funding programs. It's about protecting dignity. It's about honoring the dreams of those we serve. It's about preserving independence and ensuring that fiscal responsibility is matched with moral responsibility. Please stand with us and stand with the thousands who are counting on you. Let's make sure that every person, no matter their ability, has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you so much for your time. It's been a long day, but I really appreciate each one of you listening to us today. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Scott Jones from Township of Marshall, down by Russ County there. Bring it up to you guys. Been working on these six-to-twenty bridges, whatever. They have never been in a thing for a long time. You guys have been putting money away for them. Absolutely thank you for it. There are some that are failing. I just got another notification that another twenty-foot bridge failed, twenty and under, that failed today in Russ County area, which is kind of bringing a problem within our townships and everything, because even though they fail, the public finds the shortest route around that bridge. And usually the shortest route is going to be down our township roads, and they get pounded pretty hard. With our GTA's that we have in our townships, we really don't have enough money to keep sticking in, because I'm already cutting corners in my town of where I'm going to gravel, not going to gravel, what road's going to get cracked sealed, you know, and how we're going to maintain and all this. So, it's going to draw a great problem, and I'm really encourage you guys to keep increasing our GTA's throughout our county, our townships, all that. We really need the money. The LRET programs are fantastic, but without the, you know, without your GTA's being up there, you don't have enough money to help with the LRET programs to qualify, to make your payment on these things, to help cover what we need to do. You know, as far as the six-to-twenty, some of them I know if they get close to twenty-foot in diameter, you know, we're going to push it over twenty feet to make them a bridge before they fall into a bridge program, you know. So, I'm just bringing it to attention and make sure you guys keep working on the way you are to keep pushing as much as we can for the money that we can get for our townships, because we're really lacking in some of the areas up here for money. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Joey Johnson, the Director of the Senior Resource Center in Sawyer County. We are one of four nonprofit AG units in Sawyer County, or actually in the state of Wisconsin. We serve breakfast, lunch, and Meals on Wheels, which is our largest. Sixty-seven percent of the meals that we serve are Meals on Wheels, and we come short every year with our money for Meals on Wheels. Sixty-seven percent of the meals that we serve are Meals on Wheels. In rural Wisconsin, since COVID, our numbers have doubled in the number of people that get Meals on Wheels. Our budget has not increased for Meals on Wheels. It's actually stayed the same or gone up a little bit. Congregate meals stay the same or go up a little bit. In rural Wisconsin, in northern Wisconsin especially, we have more people that need Meals on Wheels than they need to come in and socialize. Because during COVID, we all know that people changed the way they did things and how they handled things. So we have more people who need Meals on Wheels. We have people who we get phone calls from the hospital and clinic, somebody's having surgery, they need meals for a short period of time. And the other problem that we have in northern Wisconsin is, we have a lot of people that have moved to this area, especially the Hayward area, because of the tourism, second homeowners. They move here, they have no family here, so they count on places like the Senior Resource Center to provide those things for them, those meals. We sometimes are the only lifeline that they have in a day that they see anybody. It's not uncommon that in a month, I might make two or three phone calls for a welfare check, or go and call APS, adult protective surgeries. It's not uncommon that I get a call from a Meals on Wheels driver, and I have to go to a DOA. Those kinds of things happen. The one thing that I want to end with today, and this is something that I've used multiple times when I've spoken at different things like this. We have a lot of resources in northern Wisconsin. They are trees. Trees have pockets, don't have pockets. If you don't have pockets, you don't have money. That's what we're facing here. We also are one of multiple nonprofits in Sawyer County. We're all fighting for the same piece of pie. That's why every Monday night, the Senior Resource Center, myself included, and some of the people standing behind me, we do bingo every Monday night. We do it in the summer. Some weeks, we are doing bingo, three nights a week, just to support our programs. And then on top of that, we pay sales tax on that money that we make, so we can raise funds. We are very lucky, the community we live in, but again, we have lots of resources. Trees, they have no pockets, no pockets, no money. Thank you for your time today. Joey Johnson?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Terry Doucel. I'm here representing Russ County Farm Bureau. And as Scott spoke, these six-to-twenty bridges, in Russ County right now, we've got two farms that are isolated by bridges posted. They can't get crop out, they can't get fertilizer or seed in. The bridges were posted at ten-ton. In fact, as Scott said, one of them today was just closed. That's on the west side of one of these two farms. We've also got two large dairies, one in Russ County, one in Sawyer County, with these bridges kind of surrounding these farms. As these inspections continue, these farms are in jeopardy of not being able to get a semi in to get their milk out. a semi in to get their milk out. The agricultural industry and the forestry industry both severely affected by these six to 20 bridges. It's a lifeline to these northern counties, the forestry industry and the ag. And I would encourage this committee, if they could, if there's a way to find some kind of emergency funding, that somebodies can be replaced with arch pipes or box culverts, which are substantially cheaper than putting a bridge back in. So we can keep our our ag and our forestry industry vital in this in this area. I mean, it's for Russ County, it's three quarters of our county's income is agriculture and forestry. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time and thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Becky Stiles, and I'm proud superintendent of the Osceola School District, a small but mighty district along the St. Croix River, where every student matters. In education, we often talk about impact, the kind of difference a school can make in a life. But once in a while, we're shown it. Millicent Lindahl Chapman, a member of the Osceola High School class of 1947, lived through a world war. But within the small walls of our small town high school, she found joy, purpose and belonging. The memories she made there lasted a lifetime. And then, years later, quietly without fanfare, Millie left Osceola High School a gift, the remainder of her estate. How much was that, you may ask? $1.8 million. That's a pretty big gift. That's no ordinary donation. It's a legacy, a testament to the enduring power of public schools. $1.8 million is considerable amount of money. But now imagine that same amount of money, not as a gift, but as a gap. Because that's exactly what has become for the Osceola School District. $1.8 million is the exact amount that we transfer from our general fund to cover our special education obligations. It's 8.4% of our total Fund 10 budget. We're doing our part, we've tightened our belts, but here's the truth. When idea became law in 1975, the promise was the cost of special ed would be shared, 40% federal, 60% state. Last year, the Osceola School District received just 29% of the 60% promised. Even if we could use the 1.8 million to fill the gap, which we can't because it's designated to our high school, we'd be back at the same place as we were next year. This isn't a one time problem. It's a pattern, a system that hasn't kept its promises. I'm not here asking for more. I'm asking for enough, enough to serve our students no matter their needs. Please lean in because you hold the power to ensure that every student in every school has enough. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Addison Newman, and I hope to become a teacher one day. I'm a senior and the student representative on the Board of the Osceola School District. Osceola, like many other towns in Wisconsin, is known for its small town charm, history and a large number of its community who are proud to be farmers. I am one of them. 95% of farms in Wisconsin are family owned. 50% of those farmers have a second job, and for four generations, my family has run our farm while also having second jobs. The Osceola School District faces a $1.6 million deficit for next school year, 1.6 million that has been taken out of the budget by cutting teacher positions, right sizing school buildings and decreasing the educational opportunities for our kids who deserve the best education they can possibly receive. Agriculture education is perhaps one of the most essential and applicable areas of education in our district. Many of the students that go through our schools will have a career that somehow relates to the ag industry. Our ag department was cut in half last year due to the deficit, and our middle schoolers no longer receive ag education. As teachers move on to new job opportunities, their positions aren't being replaced. I took business law last year and received college credit for the class because of my business teacher. He took a new job and his position disappeared because we no longer can afford to replace him. My sister is five years younger than me. How many opportunities like business law or middle school ag classes that I was blessed to take advantage of will she not have in five years? How far will these budget cuts go before schools can't even afford to hire the basic positions they need to educate their students? So how are we supposed to educate our future farmers without the ag programs they need to thrive? How are we supposed to give our students the best education that they deserve? That choice is yours. I only ask for funding to balance the budget. I'm not asking for extra, I'm asking for enough. Please.
Thank you Senator Safschult, Senator Quinn and Representative Tucker for being here today and the rest of the committee as well. My name is Tristan Bell. I hope to one day be in your shoes, helping better off the state of Wisconsin. I come from a small town just off of I-35, a small town called Osceola, where I go to high school as a junior, a place full of prosperous young minds ready to learn and grow, but for some, that dream is in jeopardy. 15% of Osceola students have an individualized education program or an IEP. A lot think this may be unfair, but it's not. These young minds struggle to learn in ways that most would find easy. This label doesn't mean they aren't smart or gifted. These these programs are meant for to help the student thrive, but we aren't getting enough. My family used to call Somerset home, but the school wasn't accommodating my brother who has an IEP. Like any parent, mine wanted the best, so we moved to Osceola. That nightmare we hoped to leave behind followed. A joyful young mind like my brother burdened with the responsibility of figuring things out on his own when his condition doesn't allow for that. Neglected, not because the teachers don't want to, but because they can't. Whether it be a lack of training, lack of staff, all this caused by lack of funding has grown to resent, he has grown to resent not just our school, but the school system as a whole. So he finds other ways to enjoy school, like the ice fishing team, which is in the crosshairs of being cut. We have already cut funding to face our $1.6 million deficit, sacrificing our business department. Once called the school that everyone wants to be at, now facing declining enrollment. Now the question is why? Maybe the lack of quality education, the lack of opportunities, all caused by the lack of funding. The broken promise. Imagine your child being neglected because their school wasn't getting enough. Not more, just enough. Please keep your promise to help not just my brother, but the thousands of students that suffer year after year because they don't have what they need. All we're asking for is enough. Keep your promise. Thank you all.
My name is Brooke Kullser. I have the honor of being from the Osceola School Board in the beautiful town of Osceola, Wisconsin. I first of all, want to thank you all for being here. I have words to say, but I'm going to pause and just acknowledge my two students that are from our high school. I'm so proud of them for coming and speaking to you. This is no small task, and so I'm so proud of them for coming and speaking their story. As I've served on the school board for the last nine years as a parent, the biggest thing that is so apparent to me is the lack of funding. But you'll say it isn't a lack of funding, right? We are funding our schools, but we are not funding them equitably. Just because some need more doesn't mean some need less. Milwaukee schools don't deserve any more than Osceola, and Osceola shouldn't get any less than Milwaukee. We're all equal, raising the next generation's greatest kids. And so I ask for you to please, please take the time to invest in our kids, invest in my students that came here today to address you. Stop the unfunded mandates. Stop and relook at our system. We need to restart it and go again because our kids and our future are worth it. Thank you.
From Marionette County, we have John, I think it's G U A R I S, I think it's E D, County Funding. Linda Jorgensen. Chris Ferton. P H E R N E T T O N. Kitty Campus. Brianna Pearson. Jody Ward. Looks like we have a group from A D R C. Jennifer Jacko. Carol Martin, part of that group. Ann Charter. Victoria McMurray, I believe. M C M U R R, I believe it's A Y. Peter Norgren. N O R D G R E N. Melinda McKevett. Sham. M C K E V E T T. S H, I think it's A M. Deborah Kalowicz. K L A T. I think it's K I E W I C Z. What's that?
Chuck Gah.
Chuck Gah. You should be reading this. Jim Raau. And Melissa Larson. And Melissa signed in at 9:27.
Yes, thank you all for being here. This is really a marathon for your Bruins. I am Scott Smith. I live in Hayward. And as an aside, when I was here earlier, I heard the Director of the Park Theater talk to you, and I'm a volunteer for the Park Theater, and I put out posters to advertise upcoming events. We don't have a lot of opportunity for live arts in this area, and so any support you can give the Park Theater is much appreciated. But what I came to talk about is that my wife and I tune into public radio and television every day, and we support the Wisconsin affiliates of these organizations with monthly donations and have done so over the course of our marriage. So these are very important to us. Nowhere else can we get a balanced understanding of the issues. We see PBS Wisconsin and WPR as honest brokers in their reporting of the news and other important information that affects our lives. Many of these programs focus on information specific to Wisconsin. These include stories regarding education, crime, abortion, the economy, immigration, Social Security, gardening, environmental issues and many others. Without these radio stations to tune into, we feel we would be very uninformed on issues important to us. The other radio stations do not cover those topics as well. Given the current threat of defunding at the national level, it makes sense to us that our state tax dollars continue to support both public radio and television in Wisconsin. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is John Garrisco. I'm the Chair for the Marionette County Board of Supervisors over on the east end of the state. Brought with me my Vice Chair Stan Wajinski. We're looking to just put a bug in your ear about the shared revenue system. It's a problem for for our county, and I know over the last several weeks, I've been in correspondence with 22 other chairs and vice chairs of other counties in northern Wisconsin, and they've echoed that same feeling. We've provided you with two referendums, 605 and 606 that Marionette County passed. I expect in the very near future that we will have those other counties signing similar referendums, asking that you revise the levy system for the counties. We're constantly chasing money. We don't have enough revenue. Marionette County, for instance, has 300 miles of town roads or of county roads, and it's costing us about $330,000 per mile just to resurface those roads. It's a real problem. The cost of doing that went up starting in 2020 and has escalated since then. So I'll let Stan give a little bit more of a detail on that.
Thanks, John. Thanks to the committee for being here. I've been here all day, as you have, and pretty much every, all the testimony amounts to the same thing. The local units of government, whether it's the education system or the county boards or the healthcare system or the social services, they're all facing the same issues. There's simply a shortage of funding, and we're in a lot of ways, as John mentioned, prohibited from raising our own funds, even though our constituents have asked us to do that. And so we'd like to see some consideration to given, given to not only changing these formulas, but to create some balance. Because when they were, when these funding, when these spending limits were put in place, there wasn't equity among all the counties. So there's a good deal of disparity now and very little opportunity to do very much of it. Oh, we're all both on one?
A group of three get five minutes.
Oh, gotcha.
It just got two, right?
Well, he didn't even, she even put a lot of slip.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't called you.
No, that's true. I just.
He told me to come up. He's my chairman. What can I do? What do you, what do you do when Chairman Markline tells you?
He's walked a mile in your shoes before, so.
Just let me say one last thing. One observation I've made since I've been here is the requests are for money. The state is sitting on a surplus. That's the way our constituency looks at it. And they wonder why we're not talking to you to convince you to share more of that revenue. Okay? Now, one thing I observed is that in all the testimony today, not one person came and said, you know that reserve, why don't you get it back to me in an income tax increase? Because I could really use it. We haven't heard that at the county level? We don't hear it here today. One person could have just taken that Learjet and tried to land somewhere around here and encouraged you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jen Jacob, and I'm with my colleagues Leanne Grover and Carol Martin. We are representing Aging and Disability Resource Centers. The counties that we represent here are Barron, Rusk and Sawyer County, but really I want to represent A D R Cs across the state of Wisconsin. A D R Cs were created 25 years ago to save taxpayer dollars. We reduce the number of Medicaid beneficiaries who enter the nursing home by helping them access services in the community first at a much lower cost to everyone. A D R Cs were also created to make sure citizens who have their own personal resources find help they need to delay or prevent the need entirely for publicly funded programs. So if you are looking for a big savings in this biennial budget, you know, look at funding A D R Cs. A D R C offices are located in every county. We are considered one stop shops for Wisconsinites, providing unbiased information related to aging or living with a disability. Our goal is to help people maintain their independence by connecting them to the right resources and local resources in all of our local communities. A D R Cs help family caregivers who are struggling. Many caregivers we're talking today, 80% of all the care that's provided is by unpaid family caregivers. A D R Cs are the first phone call they make. They they're looking to us to provide them with all of the resources and information so that they can be caregivers in the home. A D R Cs help families and individuals living with dementia. As our population is aging, we are seeing more and more people come into our offices looking for answers and resources related to dementia services. A D R Cs employ benefit specialists who help people navigate very complicated private and public benefits, especially Medicare and Social Security. When people have a good fit with their Medicare plans and their supplements, they save their personal resources. In Barron County in 2024, in a seven week period of open enrollment, we helped over 1,000 people select the appropriate plan for them. A D R Cs help keep people out of crisis. Therefore, we're reducing that load on adult protective services and law enforcement. A lot of times, those agencies are making referrals to us to help so we're not paying for those more expensive costs. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is home delivered meals. I did hear somebody else talk about Meals on Wheels or home delivered meals. Senator Quinn has helped deliver for us. Thank you. Every county in Wisconsin provides a home delivered meal program. In most cases, this program is administered by the A D R C. It is in Barron County. This program saves taxpayer dollars by avoiding costly and preventable healthcare expenditures paid through Medicaid, Medicare and Personal Resources. The state average cost to deliver a meal to a homebound senior is about $11 per meal. And if you think about that, other people have mentioned it, the cost of a nursing home, one day in a nursing home, it can be almost $300, well, in a month. In one day in a hospital can be $2,500, one day in a nursing home about $300. So that $11 meal, we know. So that $11 meal, we know in Barron County, keeps many, many people home where they want to be. We receive a very small amount of federal funding for this program. Most of the funding for that program is actually from the participants themselves. But I know in the state of Wisconsin, nearly 14 counties are starting waiting lists for that home-delivered meal program. So we are in need for the state to help pitch in there. I just wanted to let you know, too, I recently looked at kind of our customer load in our ADRC. We're getting up to 100 calls a day, just in our small Barron County. We get 25 appointments a day, 20 walk-ins a day. We're definitely way busier than we were 25, 20 years ago. So just please, just know, you know, we're linking people with all of those resources and information that they need, whether it's about housing, respite, nutrition, anything that, you know, people need to stay and age in place. And just consider, you know, in continuing to invest in ADRCs. We do need more funding. They're looking at, you know, $20 million more in funding. In the home-delivered meal program, you put more funding in both areas last biennial budget, and it's very, very important for us. So thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Wisconsin Joint Finance Biennial Budget Committee. This must be exhausting for you. But I want to briefly speak. My name is Linda Jorgensen. I'm speaking on behalf of the 100-plus members of the nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Ashland and Bayfield Counties. First, I want to applaud you for this effort to collect all this impressive testimony from your constituents. We hope you will honor it in formulating your next biennial budget. They have a lot of important wisdom they're sharing with you today, if you are listening carefully. And this is the democratic process, which we are so proud of in Wisconsin and in the United States. Second, at this juncture in U.S. history, we implore you to look inward at your motivations here and work together. That's Republicans and Democrats working together for bipartisan solutions. One place to start might be to work together on the governor's year of the kid's budget. Because this is a good budget for our rural counties. This is a good budget. This addresses a whole bunch of concerns that you heard from your constituents today. I'm not going to itemize the list of items people brought up today. You have been recording it multiple times. But I did want to share one important final note here. As thoughtful leaders of our state, please don't make your budget decisions based on solely what is an unknown, which is the federal budget cuts and what they could mean for Wisconsin. Be proactive. Our citizens and our youth are dependent upon you for it.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Sherman, and my wife, Pasha, and I live in Rice Lake. We've been married 55 years. It's a real statement about her endurance, I can tell you that. I'm not sure how it happened, but I've also now become one of what my friends' children call "the ancients." I don't know about that either. We recently joined the Wisconsin Farmers Union because of the many programs they do on behalf of family farms. Specifically, I'm here to urge you to support the local food purchase assistance. This would be a wise investment in Wisconsin's food security and local economic growth. In the 1980s, I was a harvesting and handling specialist for all of Florida vegetable crops. My work included shipments of tomatoes from Homestead, Florida, to Toronto, Canada. I personally rode shotgun with a truck shipment of potatoes from Hastings, Florida, to Chicago, Illinois. I learned a lot about road signs then. My personal favorite was "the bridges freeze first," and I repeated that many times to the driver. I spent another five years working with Green Giant, doing year-round worldwide sourcing, harvesting, and handling of fresh vegetables to build a fresh business. This included air freighting fresh asparagus from Cheyenne, Chile, to Miami, Florida. We sourced and shipped fresh wheat corn from production points in Mexico, Florida, and moving northward to Wisconsin and Minnesota. We all know how the COVID epidemic disrupted these long-distance shipment, supply chains. The on-again, off-again tariff situation is certain to cause further disruptions. Your investment in the LFPA will enable the Super Transport Cooperative that they have developed over the past two years to accomplish local farm pickup and distribution to fill this essential aspect of Wisconsin's food security and economic growth. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Pearson, and I am a certified peer support specialist with Indigo, an independent living center in Superior, Wisconsin. We're a nonprofit organization run by and for people with disabilities. We provide support, advocacy, and resources to help individuals live independently and fully participate in their communities. We are one of eight independent living centers across the state, and today as a coalition, we are asking for a $2.6 million increase in base funding. I'm here today to ask for your support in increasing state funding for independent living services, like the peer support that I provide on a daily basis. Peer support is built on the idea that people who have faced similar challenges can best support each other. I can personally speak to the power of peer support, as I have two decades of lived experience with substance use and mental health. And because of that experience, I've had to navigate, navigate many complex systems on my own. I was surrounded by community members, but that is not the case for a lot of the peers that I support on a daily basis. A lot of these individuals are isolated and desperately seeking resources to overcome their daily struggles. Thanks to Indigo, the independent living center that I work at and have been with for the last couple of years, I use my experience to help others. I work closely with many individuals within Douglas County Treatment Court, deflection and diversion programs in Wisconsin, and throughout the homeless population, providing resources and helping them access countless services based on their individual needs. I would not be here today unable to serve our consumers without Indigo giving me the opportunity to work at an independent living center that embraces individuals with disabilities like myself. Please consider the $2.6 million in base funding for independent living centers. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Chartier. I live in Ashland. I am a proud constituent of Senator Quinn and Angela Stroud. And I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. You have important decisions to make, and it is truly an honor to be here. This is what democracy looks like. And yes, it's a terribly long day, and I'm impressed at about the extent to which you show interest. There isn't a single issue that I have heard people talk about today that isn't important. So you have truly tough decisions to make as you divide up the pie. The pie that's made up of Wisconsin tax dollars and federal dollars that come to you from Washington. I am a retired public school teacher. I've lived in Wisconsin since the late 80s, and I'm truly proud to be here. My great-grandmother, on my maternal side, was from Wisconsin, so I, in a way, came back home. Most importantly, you need to think about who needs resources the most. As I said, everything I've heard is important, so how do you decide? It's tough. So ultimately, be generous. And that includes being as fair and equitable as you possibly can be, using that extra money we have on hand as perhaps the icing on top. But again, thank you for what you do. Please be as generous as possible, and everything you've heard is important. Oh, by the way, I'm working to decommission Line 5, and I substitute teach sometimes, and I know how important public, special education is. So thank you very much.
Hi. Good afternoon, chairpersons and members of the Joint Finance Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today about an urgent issue affecting families, businesses, and the future of our communities, the need for permanent investment in childcare. I'm the owner of one out of only two licensed childcare centers in Burnett County. I've submitted to the sergeant's office a copy of our 2024 profit and loss report, so you can see the following numbers for yourself. They tell a very clear story. Without ongoing support, licensed childcare centers will not survive. In 2024, our childcare center worked hard to remain financially stable. We ended the year with a total profit of just $11,802. That small margin was only possible because of critical state programs. Specifically, $33,261 came from the childcare accounts, and $19,070 came from the Partner Up program, which, as you know, has already ended. Without those two sources of support, we would have faced a net loss of $40,529. In plain terms, without that help, we would be forced to close our doors. We raised our tuition rates in January to try to make, make up for the 50% cut to childcare accounts, but as we feared, enrollment quickly dropped. Families in Burnett County can't afford the new rates. Parents are struggling. Some are leaving their jobs. Others are being forced to make impossible choices about their children's care. And when families can't find care, they can't work, and our local economy suffers right along with them. The math is simple. Without permanent reliable investment from the state, childcare centers like ours can't stay open. We don't want bailouts. We want to pay our teachers a living wage, and we want the ability to provide a critical service, to allow families to work, businesses to hire, and communities to grow. I urge you to recognize childcare as the essential infrastructure that it is, and to make the investment needed to keep it strong. Thank you. Chris Forneton.
Good afternoon, JFC. My name is Victoria McMurray. Most of my life's work has been to provide licensed and accredited childcare. For the past five years, I've been a caregiver for people who are at the end of their life. I am a certified end-of-life doula. When I reviewed the governor's budget, I was glad to see that this is the year of the kid, because it helps to think that the children in Wisconsin are revered and hopefully will be protected during this dismantling of the United States of America. I noticed that the budget was published in February, before we understood that our federal funding is threatened to be cut. Many of the programs that are on the chopping block are dear to my heart, such as childcare funding, libraries, national parks, Medicaid, and the low-income heating assistance. I am here today to urge you to make careful decisions, knowing that it's probable that our federal funding will be cut. While I hope your decisions will continue to honor the needs of children, I would like to highlight the federally funded low-income heating assistance program. Many low-income households depend on energy assistance to reduce their heating costs. The program has reduced winter mortality, on average, of 250 deaths per state. And of course, our state is much colder than the average. Most of the households the program serves has a member who is either elderly, disabled, or has a child under the age of six. I am one of those households. While I continue to work as an end-of-life doula, the nature of my job is that I chronically get unemployed. And my meager Social Security is unsustainable. I depend on energy assistance to keep my home from freezing. I keep my home at 50 degrees, and I am grateful for the heat. Please ensure that the Wisconsin Low Income Energy Assistance Program will be fully funded. The irony is that the entire two-year budget for Wisconsin is almost $120 billion. That's about a third of what Elon Musk is worth, and yet his reckless chainsaw will make your job incredibly painful.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I wish you luck on your decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon, and thank you for hearing me today. My name is Jody Ward, but today, I'm standing before you first as a mother who is scared and as an employee who is stretched thin. My husband and I both work full-time, doing everything we can to support our family. But even with two incomes, the rising cost of childcare is overwhelming. Some months, I lie awake at night, wondering how we'll make it to the next. Our two little ones, just one and three years old, attend one of the only two licensed childcare centers in our entire county. Like so many others, we face tuition hikes when we can barely afford unexpected early pickups and closures we have no way to plan for, all because there simply aren't enough teachers to stay open. And the reason for that is because it's hard to find teachers to work for less than a livable wage. We have no family nearby to lean on, no backup plan, no affordable regulated options. So I find myself asking, why should my babies, and they are still babies, have to wait until kindergarten to find a stable, safe place to grow and learn? Why is reliable care a luxury instead of a basic foundation every child deserves? We are failing them. My, my county is already one of the poorest in Wisconsin. If we lose state support for childcare, I don't know what families like mine will do. Parents will leave the workforce. Children will be left in unsafe situations. Our communities will suffer for years to come. I don't want to have to choose between my children's safety and putting food on our table. No parent should have to make that choice. I don't know exactly what will happen to my family if this funding ends, but I know we will look back on this moment with heartbreak, as the moment we let our youngest fall behind before they ever got the chance to start. Please don't let that happen. Invest in them. Thank you for listening, and thank you for considering the real lives behind this crisis.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter Nordgren. I live in beautiful Cornucopia, Wisconsin, a bit north of here. And for the last 30 or so years, I've been a volunteer with the North Country Trail Association, helping support the North Country National Scenic Trail. I'm here today to encourage you to reauthorize and fund the Knowles-Nelson Stewardship Fund. When the Congress created the National Scenic Trails, they envisioned a federal, state, local, private partnership. And the way that plays out here in Wisconsin, the Park Service does the planning and gives us the tools and signs. We volunteers pick up those rakes and shovels and go out and build the trail. We maintain it, and we promote it, working with our local visitor bureaus, as well as the Department of Tourism and the Office of Outdoor Recreation, which has been mentioned here. The state pitches in by giving us technical assistance through the DNR, designating these trails as state trails, and helping us access Knowles-Nelson dollars. We've got about 70 miles of the North Country to finish here in Wisconsin, to have it across the northern tier states of the state. Most of that will go on public lands, mostly county forest, but there are critical locations where we have to purchase easements or occasionally small parcels in order to get access. Those are done with willing sellers. Knowles-Nelson has been our goal to source, and it is something we're going to need to finish those 70 miles. Our fellow National Scenic Trail, the Ice Age, is at least equally reliant on this funding, and so I ask you to support Knowles-Nelson and reauthorize it. Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Jim Ra. I'm from Iron River, Wisconsin. I'm here today as an individual supporting a few items in the proposed budget from the governor's office. I'm a veteran with some service-connected disabilities. My comments today relate to issues concerning veterans and people who are hard of hearing and deaf. The governor's office has requested to create an ADA compliance team. That's American with Disabilities Act compliance team. Since its inception in 1990, the ADA has required that reasonable accommodations must be provided for people with disabilities upon request. Last month, until last month, there was not a single public meeting venue in Bayfield County with any listing, assistive listing system available. I don't believe there are any accessible meeting facilities in the other three northwest counties of the state either. in the other three northwest counties of the state either. And hearing access is, for the most part, lacking in every medical facility as well. That happens to include this particular auditorium, by the way. We need to do better in Wisconsin. The Department of Health Services has requested $90,000 for interpreter services, and that's needed because profoundly hard-of-hearing people and deaf people need that for communication. The governor has requested $512,000 in fiscal '26 and more in '27 for a veterans outreach program, which connects veterans to community services for mental health and substance abuse. Thank you.
Hello. You know, I know it's say good morning, but I guess five hours in, I could say good afternoon to you all. My name is Melinda McKevadaisum, and I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Lakutarae. The club is my home. My club journey started as a club kid, worked as a youth staff, cook, volunteered while my husband was in basic training, talked my husband into coming home. And then, six years later, I became the program director, quickly turned into the unit director, and six short months later, I became the CEO. I have enjoyed watching our youth grow into amazing young adults. I am here today to ask you all to continue TANF funding for $7.3 million annually. This is the same amount as the last fiscal year, 2023, 2024, to allow after-school programs like Be Great, Graduate, and Wisconsin After 3 to keep having an impact. Within these programs are Power Hour, Brain Gain, DIY STEM, NBA Math Hoops, and Career Launch that provide our youth with help improving their reading and writing skills, science, math, engineering, technology skills. Our trained professionals focus on increasing academic achievement, school engagement, and career readiness while reducing juvenile crime and helping keep our youth off drugs. We help to build self-confidence in our members and show them that their voice matters. Clubs across the state provide a safe, fun experience for all young people that can reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. This is our mission. I urge you to continue funding clubs at $7.3 million as TANF Temporary Assistant for Needy Families every year in the future, the amount as last year, 2023, 2024. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more. We're going to call some more names up.
Scott Schehiel. I think it's S-C-H-E-I-L. Feed My People Food Bank. I think it's Gillian Berg with Indigo from Superior. Mark Sherman. Liz John, I think it is. We have a group, Highway Commissioners. Brian Danielson, Jake Benson, and John Pinow. Matt Erickson. Teresa Fredericks, Tree Top Child Development Center. J.W. Sutton Jr. Martina Tendrup, T-E-N-D-R-U-P. Richard Jones. Denise Michelson, School District of Washburn. Jessica Hutchinson. Autumn Marshall, I believe it is. And then, Rita T-H-O-F-E-R-N. And that was at 9:43.
Very good. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Larson, and for the past 25 years, I've been the Food Access and Resource Coordinator at West Central Wisconsin Community Action Agency located in Glenwood City, St. Croix County. I grew up in poverty most of my childhood, and I know firsthand as a child what hunger feels like. My family heavily relied on the old commodity system that was available to our community in the early 1980s. For years, the teachers would complain to my mom that I was constantly falling asleep in class, but back then, people didn't pay attention to childhood hunger and how it related to school performance. As a food pantry manager, we rely on our partnerships with local food banks like Feed My People. As food resources have become more and more scarce, requests for food assistance has been reaching an all-time high in West Central Wisconsin. I have seen a 50% increase in the folks requesting food assistance who are over the age of 60 since the pandemics had started. We also have seen a dramatic increase in requests for multiple visits within the same month by working families in those on fixed incomes. Our food pantry service numbers increased 114% since 2021. With the increased cost of living, which includes housing, transportation, and food costs, our working families, seniors, and folks on fixed incomes are finding it more and more difficult to access healthy foods within their current budgets, and they need to rely on food assistance programs as a supplemental source and not just as an emergency source. I'm asking you to support food security grants in the state budget. $30 million to provide grants to Wisconsin's nonprofit food assistance